Evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the Merrimack School Board and the Merrimack Town Council this Tuesday, November 14th, 2017. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two for this evening's agenda is public comments. If anyone from the public would like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And the wireless mic should be live right in the corner.
Nicole Thomaselli, Love and Knollwood Drive in Merrimack. I just wanted to say thank you so much for this joint meeting of the school board, the town council. I'm thrilled that MVD is here. I desperately want to see action in our schools regarding filtering this water. It needs to be done very soon. It's been eighteen months. The youngest children in the town, the most vulnerable population, we are all responsible for, all of us are responsible for, not just the parents. They're vulnerable, and we need to take action. All of our property values are at stake, certainly their health is at stake. Not having a solution on the table for this long is very infuriating. So, thanks for the time tonight. I really want to see some answers.
One more chance of public comments? Still coming? Okay. If anyone else would like to speak, if you can queue up behind, that would be good for time. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name's Kathy Stack. I'm at Seven Knollwood Drive in Merrimack, and I do want to thank you all for holding this meeting. I think it's a critical juncture we're at now. I, too, live in an area where I have a contaminated private well. It is contaminated, it's been contaminated, and I have no resolution, no answers. In fact, if anything, I get conflicting answers from calling the state to trying to get answers out of some of the town council members. Frustrated, yeah, it's our health we're talking about, it's our children we're talking about. How can we not give our children clean water? Okay, we've got a problem here. Let's face it, let's own up to it, let's take a look at it, and let's take some action to fix it.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in public comments? Seeing them, we will close public comments. And onto item number three, which is the update on water conditions in Merrimack, review of the school district's vested concern and town council's efforts on quality improvements. So I invite to the table MVD commissioners and executive director of the MVD, Ron Minor. And thank you for coming.
So, we wanted to thank you for coming tonight to this joint meeting. I think, you know, we are definitely, as a school district, a large vested customer. Our students are obviously large consumers in our buildings while they're in our care. And there's been a lot of, you know, talking concern. I know we've had some state hearings as well. But, you know, we definitely want to look at, you know, what we need to do in our schools, if anything is necessary, or if things are happening on an MVD level as a governing body, to make adjustments to get further improvements in the water quality in Merrimack based on things like PFOAs. So that was really the reason for us wanting to talk to you further, and knowing that a lot has been going on with, you know, the state. So, you know, we, as the school board, are definitely looking at this from a perspective of student safety. And that's something that is very important to us as a board and as a district. So as water quality does impact student safety, we want to make sure that we're getting the best information, as much as you can share, and we understand that there may be things you can't, and we respect that, what long-term goals there are, and what we're hoping to see as a long-term resolution for the community, and how our buildings will be benefiting from that. So I know the town council also has a vested interest and has been working as well, and if you wanted to weigh in, Nancy, on your thoughts.
Well, as you mentioned, as is clear, the town council's always been, felt that public safety is important. And certainly, the youngest citizens of our town are as important as any one of us, if not more, actually. So, we've been following this for a long time with MVD. There are issues related to MVD, but there's also what the town council is particularly jumping on, now that we know blood study results of those wells that are contaminated, they're not MVD. And they have no one representing them, and that's what we're taking our task on right now. So any public who have contaminated wells, make sure that you call Eileen Cabanel in Town Hall, and make sure she knows your name and address, because we have to be able to pull all those names and addresses together, okay? So that's where we're focusing our energies on at the moment. And who knows what will come of that, but that's where we want to start. So we'll be interested in hearing, as well, what the MVD says, obviously. Thank you. Eileen?
I think, even though we haven't really talked about it, I think it's important for people to understand that the town council recently has decided to take a more active, proactive, being-at-the-table kind of a role in the sense, there are only certain ways that they can do that. And I just think it needs to be made very clear, as it has on many occasions, that the town council has no jurisdiction whatsoever, nor any seat at the table between any discussions with MVD and St. Cobain.
Or DES.
Or DES. We have no, we're not privy to any of that information, except for them saying progress is being made. Where the council wanted to take an active role, and I think when we talked about the blood tests, again, those were MVD blood test samples.
Correct.
So, again, that relates to MVD customers. Where the gap really is, that seems to be missing, is what Ms. Stack was just talking about, which is those well contamina, those wells that were contaminated above or right around the seventy parts per trillion number that seem to be out of the plume area, or the originally established plume area, that aren't being addressed. And so the council is actively pursuing that angle, which is really the only one that you have any control over. So, I'm going to say this anyway, but people should know that we have started speaking to an attorney. And, you know, those discussions can't be made public necessarily, but the avenue is to help those people that the council has the ability to correct. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. So, gentlemen?
You get the floor.
You do.
Thank you, Shannon, for the invitation. We reached out to the school committee last week, or Shannon contacted me, asked if we wanted to attend the meeting, or if we would, I guess. And we asked if there were questions that had been formulated ahead of time, or that you had ahead of time, and to my knowledge, there were none that were forwarded to us. Let me express the same sentiments that we've already heard tonight, to some degree. The MVD, obviously, is concerned about water safety and water quality for its ratepayers, have been, continue to be, and look forward to being in that posture in the near and far future. Perhaps our perspective is a little different in terms of, we look at the volume of water that we produce. In the aggregate, it's nearly a billion gallons a year. And we are monitoring the PFOA, PFOS, as well as five or six other contaminants that have been in the water forever: iron, manganese, sodium, chloride...
Can you lead forward, Ron?
Nitrites, nitrates, and so on. And in my history with the MVD, which is somewhat long, we've always met the standards or been below. I don't know whether there's anybody on the council that was, Tommy may have been here, I think it was about eight, maybe even nine years ago, when the MVD came forward asking councils' help to abate salt treatment in town on the roads, because we were getting very, very close to the line, and alerted the town and the townspeople and businesses through that meeting that we needed help. And that's been extended to a great degree. We're not where we would like to be with sodium and salt, but we're, it's reducing as we speak. Yes, there are ongoing negotiations with a large business in town. Very recently, we've met with our attorneys. We have reason to be somewhat encouraged that progress is being made in that regard. I dare not say more in that specific sense, but yes, we're working, I'll say, together with the corporation, and it's as frustrating as everybody in this room feels.
Can you lean forward?
February 29th, 2016, we were alerted to the fact that there was some problems with PFOA, PFOS. Yes, nineteen months ago. I haven't spent a week considering MVD business. Neither has Ron, neither has Jill. That hasn't been foremost in our mind, and what to do. I will not tell you that there are specific, long-range plans for other treatments right now. To be quite honest with you, we've been focused on fighting this fire. We'll take the heat for that or not, but that's where we are. We have, however, with our engineering outfit, been encouraging the fellow that they send most frequently to us to be very mindful of not only PFOA, PFOS, but of the other twenty-some PFC emerging contaminants that may or may not become problematic. I'm going to say that again. The larger list of PFC contaminant, emerging contaminants, may or may not be problematic. What that does to the MVD, or what is part of the process, is we'll, we could very quickly, perhaps, say, "Okay, we're going to build XXX treatment plants for PFOA, PFOS. Thank you very much. You pay the bill, we're done, we're okay." When you finish the very first one, you find you haven't done the job correctly in terms of gathering the rest of the pollutants, perhaps. So that's another dynamic that I want, these boards and the public to understand. It's a larger problem than just PFOA, PFOS. We're aware of it, we're gathering information about it, and we're working the problem.
Are there any questions from board members? Either, Bobby? I'm seeing Peter, and then I'm seeing Michael, and then Cindy. So, Peter, you get the floor first? First hand up.
Microphone, microphone.
Thanks for being here. I do have a number of questions. I wasn't offered the ability to submit them to you ahead of time, or I would have. I don't know if that just went to the school board. A couple of things, though, guys. Myself and Counselor Boyd are going to be liaisons and be on the Citizens Concerned Citizens Water Group, if I'm getting that correct. I'm sorry if I didn't. And one of the things we talked about at that last meeting, that we were all there, you guys included, is, and it's my personal hopes, that somebody from MVD will be on that with us. And I know you can't be there to talk about negotiations or things, that you can't be, but you can be there to communicate possibly, you know, what's happening, what's not happening, as far as what you can talk about, or just to listen and take in some thoughts. So I'm hoping that maybe somebody, somebody who represents MVD, will be on that board with myself and Counselor Boyd and other members of the community. I know Dick Barry has mentioned that he will be there as our legislative member to be representative on that. So, again, if you guys would think about that, and that's more of just a statement. The other thing I wanted to know was, do you have a list of those houses on Joppa Road that St. Cobain is fighting and will not put on public water, will not pay for public water?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. I just wanted to confirm that, because I know we've got it, and I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. And I guess sort of, one of the other things, what I've heard from folks in town since I'm in this position as a counselor, is that, and it's whether it's right, wrong, or different, but the people have said to me, different people at various points have said, one of the concerns is communications. And I'm so happy that you guys are here tonight. And I think that constant communications, even, you know, if there's not a lot to report, but reporting it and getting it out there, I mean, I think that's important to the folks in the community. So I'd ask you if you guys could, you know, frequently update, maybe? That's something, you know, there's not a lot, maybe you can always say, but you can say, "We're continuing to work on it," and I've always found that that's been helpful when issues arise. And the other thing was at the last meeting, and this is, again, something for consideration, was a gentleman got up at the meeting and asked if we, if MVD was going to consider lowering the standards of seventy parts per trillion for the PFOAs and PFOs. And the answer was, "Not at this time." And I guess, I thought it was a good point, was the customers would like a product a certain way, and maybe it's not realistic, maybe there's an answer to it, but is there possibly an ability to, maybe the state says the standard is twenty parts per trillion, I mean, excuse me, seventy parts per trillion, but maybe if the customers want a certain quality, level of quality, maybe, you know, we strive for that. So something to think about, and I'd really like to hear your thoughts on it, and if it's not realistic, and I think the community would, too. So, again, these are all issues, and if you have an answer to that, if you do, great. Again, thank you for being here, I want to emphasize that.
The issue with private property and MVD is kind of moot. I don't know how to say it anymore succinctly. If we're asked to provide water for somebody's shore, and we have procedures all in place, and that's what that is, but we are not in the mode of being allowed to go on, or, you know, private property willy-nilly. If somebody asks, yes. But that's the private property. The Concerned Citizens Group, Pete, as far as I know, we haven't been contacted by anyone in terms of a request for representation, or what it would be. A liaison, perhaps? Is that...
Yeah, a liaison. And it's more to be a listener and to offer what you can when you can, and that's the approach that the council has to take, too, after speaking to our town attorney. But, and it's no fault, and I'm not trying to point that you guys weren't responsible, I don't believe you were invited, but, you know, you're here, I thought it was important to let you know, and that, you know, to, it'd be great to have you on there.
The communications piece, we had...
Lean forward, need you to lean forward. Hold the mic in as much as you can. I know you're on a short leash, sorry.
The communications piece, we had a couple of people in our, at our last Board of Commissioners meeting suggesting that we work harder at keeping the community informed. We have, that's going to be an item that will be discussed in our, at our next agenda. We've discussed it preliminarily on one agenda earlier in the year. It didn't come to a lot of results at that point, but that's coming on. The parts per trillion, that's one that, the other commissioners can tell me if I'm wrong, I haven't heard anyone discuss that we should, that we should be determining, at least at this point, a lower parts per trillion than what is being promulgated by EPA and the state. Probably the biggest reason for that, Pete, is it's a, at the EPA level, it's a health advisory number. And I believe that's the same case with the New Hampshire DES. We are fortunate or not, depending on what point of view you want to take, in the very low twenties, in all of our sources, in terms of an average, and if you think that we blend everything into the system, as you're well aware that we do, that's what we're running. It would be about twenty-one point, or twenty-point-five, twenty-one, something of that nature. So we're, as I say, in regards to the wells we're using, we're pretty fortunate. Those are the quick answers I have for you, I don't know if anybody wants to expand on.
Quick question, is that number combined, PFOA, PFOS?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam, you had a tough tail off that. Does that also include wells four and five, which have been offline for over a year?
Excuse me, Bill?
Does that include the two wells that are offline?
No, they have not been tested since the lockout, tagout proviso, whatever, from the DES.
Has the state been in any communication with you, as to when they may be retesting those wells for a current level, just for informational purposes?
We have, that's been a thought that we've had, except that, we don't have permission to even turn them on. We weren't the one, I mean, and that's what I mean about it being a...
The state shut it down, I understand that, but I also think that...
I will tell you, I will tell you that our goal is that when they come on, the hope for a treatment plant that we're, that's being designed as we speak, will have non-detect results for PFOA, PFOS, or we won't be satisfied.
Just one follow-up to a comment that Chairman Woods made, if I could, please, regarding the seventy parts per trillion. There's nothing that would stop anyone from the community from presenting a warrant article for consideration at the next board of, at the next water district meeting to provide a specific standard for a PFOA level, whether it be thirty, twenty, ten, or, I mean, nothing to stop anybody from making that.
Very correct, as we mentioned to a meeting, I believe, with the town council a year ago. And that was not forthcoming at our last MVD annual meeting, so. But there's a whole procedure in place for either the commissioner, obviously the commissioner's bringing forward the warrant article, or petition warrant articles to be considered, yes. And there's no preclusions that I know of, except you have to be a resident to bring it in.
Correct. Okay. Just because things went a little wonky. Peter, you still had the mic, so do you still have questions?
No, I'm good, they took your, Ron answered it.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're set. I had queued up Mike, Cindy and Bill, do you have follow-on questions?
I probably will.
Okay, so I'll put you forth. Okay, so Mike, the mic is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight to speak with us. I have a couple of follow-up things in regards to some of the comments. One was the comment that you stated, that no one's really asked or come to you in regards to a number lower than seventy. At the last meeting, Ron, I'm not sure if you recall, but I came up and actually asked you to basically poll your customers to see what they wanted for a number. I would ask the board to find out what their customers are. It's not about standards of the state, it's not about what number the government gives you, it's what your customers want. And from everybody that I've talked to, they don't want just the seventy, they don't want the twenty. Most of them want it to be non-detect. Obviously, that might not be feasible, there might be some other avenue to go to, but I'm going to ask again, you should ask your customers, and the school board is one of them that you can ask, what we would like, and the school board can come back after a meeting, give you what number we would like presented as number that would save for our children. I'd also like to state that the time your meetings, four o'clock in the afternoon, is very hard for citizens to show up with. I've asked before that that be considered to actually be moved, so, especially in this time of need, and looking for you guys to better communicate with your customers, it would be good to actually move that to a time that's more suitable to the people that are working within the community. I would ask you, instead of waiting for the concerned citizens to reach out to you, maybe to reach out to them, just in good faith, and I know that Peter kind of mentioned it, it just shows that you guys are working with the community. Right now, what you're presenting to me is like, "Well, we'll wait until they raise their hand, or smash down our doors," and everything like that. I understand that you're working with St. Cobain, or, sorry, the other party in regards to communication. So that's great, but start talking to your customers more. Change your time or your meetings, please, and, you know, I think that it would be very helpful for the greater community, so. But thank you for your efforts. I know that there's a lot, I know there's a lot going on behind closed doors that you cannot talk about. I appreciate that, I can understand that, coming as a board member, and I ask you to please keep that up. Thank you.
They never want me to talk, it's, I don't know. They're afraid of what I'm going to say. Okay. My saying, you know, we've sat here, and I guess it's every board's turn in town occasionally to be in the really hot seat. I know we've had crises within our town, and I've been in Merrimack since eighty-one, so I'm a part of the town, and we've lived them all. We have a water contamination crisis. It's, we perceive it all, we understand it, well, maybe we don't all understand it. There's two things going on here. Okay, first of all, the quality of the water. Okay, that's one thing. The other thing is that we've had a corporation come in and violate two of our wells. We're in negotiation right now, that we're in a gag, and we get close, and we sit in hours and hours of negotiation with their lawyers, our lawyers, our engineers, their engineers, and we've sat through many, many hours. I know that people on the board up there can appreciate the time that you put in. We can't really say much about that, but we can say a lot about our philosophy as far as delivering quality water to us, the people of Merrimack, myself. I'm not selling a product that I, myself, don't think I'm the highest consumer of. I find it hard to... a product that I myself don't think I'm the highest consumer of. I find it hard to believe that anybody in this room drinks more MVD water than I do. I'm serious, because, I mean, I'm on a water diet and it's, it would be actually less healthy for me not to drink the water than to drink the water. But this fixation on 70 parts per trillion, I don't know if you all can conceive what a trillion is. If we were talking 10 years before, we would say, okay, there's just a trace of PFOA. I mean, we wouldn't be able to measure 10 parts per trillion or 20 parts per trillion. A trillion is a million times a million. 10 to the 12th. Okay? Now, there's no fixation that I know of, in all the meetings I've sat in on, that, oh, we're trying to, we're trying to stay under 70. Yes, we, we are trying to stay under 70 parts per trillion. But more importantly, we're not fixated on 70 parts per trillion. We're fixated on the lowest contamination level on all our contaminants that we can get to. And even before the crisis broke into the newspapers, we were working on issues of quality on the water and also the safety issue of having enough water to supply the town. And those are the things that we've been working on. I think we've been successful. And I, and I feel that the people in this town have gotten to the point where they believe some of the people who say, we've got bad water. We don't have bad water. We have safe water in town. Well, okay. Well, everything that I've seen says, and I'm going to continue to drink a lot of water. And, but seriously, we're not fixated on 70 parts per trillion. We're, we're fixated on the lowest and best quality water that we can deliver as MVD. That's all I want to say.
And the mic is still yours, Michael.
Thank you. I just had a follow-up comment. I would prefer you guys to not look at wells four and five, but actually look at the aquifer as a whole, because that what it, that's what it is. The aquifer is contaminated with a man-made product. There's a difference in standards between naturally occurring elements and man-made. If it's man-made, it shouldn't be in my water. Naturally occurring is something that obviously is outside of the realm of just the water that's with the minerals that are around it. Also, perception is reality. You talk about quality water. Our town is not perceived as having quality water. I don't perceive it as having quality water. I took measures into my own hands to actually do what I think is having quality water in my home. So I understand that you're doing standards for the state and EPA, just like I've talked about. But really, you need to get the heartbeat of your customers and understand what they want as a whole. And that's what you should be going ahead and for, not just what the board wants, but actually your customers. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Cindy.
When you look at these man-made elements and these emerging types of contaminants, the safety standards will undoubtedly change over time. So the fact that there are differences of opinion are only as good as the analysis of the limited number of facts available at the time. You know, hindsight will always be 2020. 20 years from now, we'll look back and say, maybe it was 70 parts per 100 trillion. I mean, it doesn't really matter to me. All I know right now is that we don't know what we don't know. We know it's a contaminant. We know it's in our water. And I'm not comfortable risking with that gamble with the children in the schools. So what, I guess what I'm saying, and what I would hope, is that right now, we have in process quotation, a quote regarding a filtration system for the school, which is running on a parallel path so that we have options going forward as we get into budget season and whatnot, as to being able to filter water for the children that are under our domain, I guess, or under our watch. So what I would ask, and is that when you are talking with this corporation, because these things will take time to work out. You've expressed that you're in some discussions. I'm sure there's lawyers involved. And that you bring to the table, on behalf of the school district, would be my hope, that as, and as a large customer of the water in this community, that, that this corporation might be able to fund something so that the taxpayers don't have to. Because I don't know how long we want to wait with children in our schools drinking our water at very young, vulnerable ages with safe levels or not safe levels that I don't have a lot of faith in. So that's what I ask. I think, I would like to see that we can, at the very minimum, minimum, as soon as possible, be able to get some filtration in our schools so that our children can drink safe water.
You can respond if you'd like, and I have a couple other people along speak, so.
It's a tough nut. I won't, I won't propose to think like a larger corporation might think, but they might think that the direction of the negotiations that we're currently in involving treatment of two wells is tantamount or comparable to a filtration plant. But food for thought. Thank you.
Okay. Cindy? Are you all set?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. So Bill talked earlier, so I'm going to give, I know Jackie had her hand up, and then I'll go over to Bill. So Jackie, the mic is yours.
I was curious, Lon, who tests your water and how often?
We're testing, we're testing monthly on our own, and I'll let Ron tell you about the labs. Or Jill.
We, we test monthly. We test with Eurofins. We send out our results, our, our samples to Eurofins and get back results. We are currently doing monthly.
I was most curious. We seem to have a problem that I'm sure is not intractable. It's the wells that are not MVD water. And I was wondering if there is any chance that you could represent those people as well at the talks. It seems terrible that we have people in this town who are drinking contaminated water. And there's been really nothing done except delivering a pile of water bottles.
We have, I don't know, and I'll let you finish up, but I, I don't know what we can do with the state as far as forcing that. We have been working with the state as far as compiling lists and, and what's available in the areas and, and that end of it. Trying to make it as easy as possible for them to identify these, you know, the closest connection, let's say, to, or for an water line extension, that end of it. So we've, we've been working closely with the DES on that. Again, I don't know if you want to-
And how many wells would you say that there would be that are contaminated?
Hesitating that kind of guess has not been my, my forte. I really don't know, Jackie. We're, we're servicing roughly 80% of Merrimack residential property. 78, 82, I don't know, 80%. Beyond that, your guess is as good as mine as to how many wells other than what we service there may be.
It, it just seems that, that the town seems to be shut out of those, those talks. And it seems to be that we need a little bit more representation, which you might not be able to do. I don't know. That's the question.
Well, back in 1955, or whenever they initiated the village district, Merrimack Village District, to, to produce the water for town, and going forward, that is just the way we've, during my tenure with the MVD, the way we've operated. If, if, if we're at a juncture in history where that's, it's time to change that, the people will let us know that, let the town know that, and, and there you go. But beyond that, to my knowledge, we have not been tagged as not taking very, very good care of business in terms of producing and distributing water through our MVD system. DES is the regulated watchdog. I've known them for a number of years, and, and I've known the history of MVD. We're not in violation in that regard. As I say, I, I can appreciate, I had a conversation with a very good friend of mine in her driveway the other day, and she was expressing to me her absolute frustration with the situation terms of private well owners, in terms of what didn't seem to be much progress with a large corporation, MVD, in terms of settling, getting the wells four and five back in service. There isn't anybody in this room that isn't as frustrated about those issues as I am, as we are, as you people are. And where's the TV camera, as the TV audience is. I can't move the clock faster. I don't have 43 billion euros to go push somebody around. And we're, we're just working the problem, folks. And I appreciate all the questions and all the comments written down here. Take them to heart, talk to staff about them and see where it goes. I will say, I'm sorry.
So I just need you to lean in because we've got the light. So that's-
I will say that I think it's been healthy that there's some awareness, as Jack mentioned, that there are certain contaminants which we should be very, very closely monitoring and perhaps doing more than I believe the commission has been doing. But again, time will tell us that in a better focus. I don't know if that gets you anywhere, but that's where we are.
Are you all set, Jackie?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a couple that haven't gone yet. So I will go Andy, Tom Koenig, and then for seconds, we'll go with Bill, then Peter.
Mic tag up here. Yeah. So, you know, it's really interesting listening to the conversation and having been around town for a while, watching how it's progressed. Being on the school board is a difficult thing because we have nearly 4,000 consumers, students, that we have to, you know, so we deal with not only the education and, and parents that like what we do, don't like what we do, but there's the environmental piece as well. And I think that as a school district, dating back to over a year ago, we debated a lot about, should we do anything? Do we wait? Do we sit back? So we took an approach as the board to look to see what are, what are levels of PFOA and PFOS work. We've done some monitoring. The numbers that came back were, like you said, they were high teens, actually, and I think in some cases, or low 20s, which was certainly well below the 70 parts per trillion. It was below some of the Vermont standards, maybe not as low as what, like New Jersey and other places. But it was low. But we also, so depending on where you stood, some people would be comfortable with that, some aren't. And we've been sort of responding to our consumers, if you will, saying, we don't think it's important enough. We don't, or we don't think it's low enough. We think that we, you want to do more. So the discussions that we've had at the board table over the last, especially the last meeting, was to look at options that we have to treat the potable, the, the drinking water that we do. You know, with bubblers as well as at kitchen sinks and stuff like that. It's by no means all-inclusive, but it's something to be able to address the consumed water during the day. And while we haven't, as a board, made any decisions, we've talked about it, it's, it's possible, depending on what we do, that, that we may choose to be proactive. We may put it in front of the voters. We may put a part of the budget. We don't know yet. But that's an approach that we're actively looking at as, with our consumers. So, you know, what Mike mentioned is that we're all, you, you are the sort of, the masters of what we consume as residents, as well as the school. And I know that you're doing things, you know, negotiations, but I want to just say that the communication part is one thing that we've learned at the school board, that you got to be as transparent as you can be as to what you're talking about. And as a board member, I've, would invite you to the table as often as you want to give an update as to what, what's going on, if you have questions of us or whatever. Because at the end of the day, we're going to potentially do something proactive that I wish we didn't have to do, but we need to do it. So I think that that's, to me, that's the takeaway that we all need to learn from here. It's very different for all of us, all the boards that we're dealing with this. But communication and letting the, the consumer speak and being able to take some actions, I think, is the important takeaway. So, thanks.
Thank you, Andy. And I'm on to Tom Koenig.
Could I just respond to that for one moment?
Of course. Yeah, I'm sorry. My apologies.
And again, and like I say, accept it, don't accept it. From this commissioner's point of view, the volumes that we're talking about don't rise to the same level of concern as I hear from some voices in the community, specifically Mike, others, in terms of, we want zero. Okay? I can't resist using a little school arithmetic. It's going to take the next thousand years to pump the trillion gallons, the first trillion gallons. And you have to consider that that isn't all the water that's ingested by human beings, schoolchildren, infants, adults, whatever. Some of it's used in industry, some of it's used in irrigation, it, you know. So I say that just to let people know that, yes, there's a problem to be worked, and yes, we're aware of it. But if I told you that the commission and the staff were anything more than very concerned about it in terms of our operation, I would probably be lying to you. Doesn't mean we're not going to work the problem. It just means that from our perspective, the, the amounts haven't pushed us to being less than prudent about what we do. Does that make any sense?
Well, just, just to follow up, it's, the thing is, is that as board members, we all have, on school board, we all have our own opinion of where we think that threshold is, whether we've had issues in our family or whatever. So, and we know very well what all the, the levels are that are around the different ones. But for us, it was the, the hearing of the consumers that says, we think you guys aren't going far enough. And that's, so if you're hearing that, that's great. I think it's good. But I think what you're hearing is, is that if you're moving forward, or, I mean, for example, I'm just going to throw this out there. If the consumers are saying, and enough, if you go to a forum and if consumers are saying this, put something out there to say, we propose that we spend $1 million to put a filtration of our own money.
I wish it was a million.
Well, but, but whatever the number is, the point is this, at the end of the day, it's all there, whether it's through water fees or through taxation, the residents are paying. If we're going to take it into our own hands while in parallel we go through litigation to solve the problem sooner, it shouldn't be up to just five members of the school board or seven members of a town council or whatever. Put it out there to the residents and have them vote and have them say whether they want to spend the $10 million or the $50,000 or whatever. That's really where we're at on the school board side, is that regardless of where we think or whether it's important or not, or whether there's litigation, we can't wait. So that's what the proactive that we're taking. And that's the only, that's what I'm trying to get at, is that-
You got it. Thank you.
Nancy, I'm going to let you cut Tom for a second, then Tom, you're next. Look at that.
Ladies first?
Ladies first.
That doesn't work. Actually, I was just going to say I had a brilliant idea, but it's not so brilliant. But it's a backup to you. it's not so brilliant, but it's a backup to you. I had a little, we, in the past, the town council has done questionnaires at elections. I would like to propose, thinking about this, having a question that will be filled out during the time of elections at all the election sites. It's just, we have a little booth, a little question, and propose that we ask the people who come to vote, what they think about paying for, or some proposal that we want to do. Do you want your pots per trillion to be below a certain? It would be difficult to, to write a couple of questions, but I think that would be an opportunity in April to be able to answer some of the questions you have, Andy, in terms of, are you willing to pay a certain amount of money to proactively put a filter in while negotiation is going on? The reality is, we have to remember that if it's approved, if we do that, the business will say, oh, well, you have it done, that we don't have to. Part of what's hanging over the negotiations is the non-action, which is frustrating to us. So that's the part that we're in trouble with. I do want to say that I have no question about you guys' intentions. Any, you and I both know, I've been to your meetings, how long ago and how many meetings. And I know the work that you do, and I think your intentions are, have always been for the safety of the water, the product that you sell. I have no questions. But from day one, you and I remember talking about communication. That's been your sin, is that you have not communicated what you've been doing, which is actually, in many cases, a lot of things. It's the lack of being informing people that leaves the average person, well, they're doing nothing. So I think you do yourself a great disservice, is my point. But I open that as an option that we should be able to consider, because I think it's an opportunity that's coming very quickly, that we could probably devise a couple of questions. And if the school board wants to be able to jump on that and say, do you want to spend a certain amount of money to be able to filter, you know, all water, just drinking water, cooking water, any way you want to devise it? I think that's a really objective way to get some information and some feedback from the customers. So I would like to be able to pro- yes, you have a, I know it's a pain in the neck, but so what?
Well, it, it just, I've just been involved in this from the very beginning, and I just have, um, a couple of things. So what I just want to make sure that people understand it, there are two groups of people when you talk about MVD and this question that you want to ask. The question should not be asked of the, um, of the non-users of MVD as to whether they want to spend the money on, um, on this project, because they won't be paying for it.
You'd have to devise the question very clearly.
So it would be a question of MVD customers as to what their, you know...
Understood.
Right.
But that would, but that would not be true with schools.
That's it. That's the fine line we're walking.
So that's the difference. And I think there's always the confusion you have with, the town council is an interesting position, and we've said this more than once. Well, do something about the water, we're not MVD. We'll do something about the schools, we're not the school board. Especially if you're moving in from without the town, you expect the town council to be involved with the school. We're not. We have no authority, we have no responsibility. We have opinions, but they don't get, they don't mean anything more than the normal citizen. So I think the same thing is true with the MVD. We get a little frustrated, but at the same time, we have to be part of the solution. So that's my proposal.
Definitely. I would just counter one thing that you said, Eileen, and that is, I am a private well owner, but I've sent my kids to buildings all over town, including schools and businesses, that they'll be using that water. So I am a, I'm a secondary consumer. Would I be buying the filtration system? No. But are, are anyone that has kids in the school district impacted, even if they have a private well at home, that filters, you know, diamonds? Um, yeah, we, that, when we send our kids to school, we absolutely do have a vested interest in, in that, even if we are a private well owner. So that's the fine line we're walking. So, um, I actually have to go to Tom, and then we're doing seconds. So I will...
That's related to your question.
Oh, right, I'll take that, and then Tom gets his, his moment, because he earned it. Very patient man. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that if we waited till the election, it would be too late for this budget season.
For you guys, yeah.
Which would then bump us, we only have that narrow window for budget season. So that's where I think that, what we'll be grappling with, um, in this upcoming budget season.
Gotcha.
Yep. I, I mean it this time, Tom, it's all yours.
Really?
I do, I promise.
Thank you very much.
Everybody stand down.
And, and I would like to express my thanks as well to the MVD for coming tonight. I also want to step back a little bit, um, because we're, we're so heavily focused on PFOA, sometimes I think we lose sight of the overall problem. Um, and that is water quality. And I appreciate, Ron, that you, Lon, that you talked about it this morning, or earlier, um, when you said that we're looking at all of the emerging contaminants, and how do we filter or consider those things, as well as looking at all the other contaminants that are in our water supply that don't get talked about so much today, but used to be 10 years ago. MBTE, benzene, tyuene, sodium, all of these things that are in water supplies all around us. In fact, I hear people saying, well, I'd rather have Nashua water, or I'd rather have Manchester water. And I dare you to look at the quality of those water supplies and compare them against MVD. Because I'm gonna guess, and probably very accurately, that you'll find things in those water supplies that you won't necessarily find in MVD's water supply. And, and so rushing off to some other water supply without understanding what's in there is not a good move. Um, and so I, I think we all need to be very cautious and, and appreciative of the fact that MVD is looking at the whole picture, trying to look at it more extensively. In fact, I would encourage the school board to be very careful before you spend $10, $1,000, or $1 million on a water filtration system, if it doesn't look at more than just PFOA and PFOS. Because you can solve one problem and miss the other. Sodium is a big problem in our town, but nobody's talking about it. Um, and I don't want to bring it up as a big issue for everybody to scream about, because we're working that issue as best we can. And I see Lon laughing, because every time you, you look into any of these things, you're gonna peel back the onion and find issues that you don't necessarily want to find. So we can get excited and we can get nervous about things, but we can realize that people are doing their best to try and make sure we have a good quality product. And we can argue all day long about whether or not MVD has a quality product at this time. I think they do. I drink the water, have been drinking it for 25 more years, and, uh, I'm comfortable with that. Um, I realize that PFOAs and PFOSs are all over the world. When they talk about finding them in polar bears and things like that, and when people come here and say, well, I'm more than five miles from St. Cobain, so there shouldn't be any in my wells, they're just not being realistic, because it's in the Teflon, it's in the stain release carpet, it's in everything that we have in our homes. Uh, and if you have none of those products in your homes, I'm really surprised, uh, because there's a lot of products, including food packaging products that have these materials in them, or C6, or some other form that's not yet considered to be bad. And so we have to be concerned with all of those things, and I commend you for looking at that bigger picture, understanding that it's taking a long time and everybody's getting a little bit antsy. Um, we'd like to see some more forward progress, but, uh, we certainly appreciate your communication and your helping us to understand where those situations are. Um, and that's basically what I wanted to add, is that we need to filter out more than just the PFOAs. We need to filter out the sodium. We need to worry about the manganese. We need to worry about all those things, uh, that are in there, and, because all of those have their own health issues and concerns. Thank you.
Yes, and we, we, as I, as I mentioned earlier this evening, we test for, I think it's seven other contaminants, sodium being one of them, chloride, um, quarterly. And, and again, um, we have an enviable positive record with DES in terms of treating for and controlling and, um, keeping those levels as low as we can. Yes, sodium, as I mentioned 10 years ago, uh, we came to you guys, the town, and you guys have been very, very helpful. Just two, just two, now coming on three snow seasons ago, the town was very, very, um, cooperative with us and worked on something as, as simple as Sanders, as Salters, to make sure that we were, that the town was being, um, as, as, um, judicious as possible with the amount of salt they laid down for, um, treatment. And that, and, so it isn't, it, it hasn't dropped off the radar. It isn't as exciting as it was 10 years ago. I suspect maybe this stuff won't be as exciting 10 years from now.
Okay. I do have some second round...
Not insincerely.
Okay. So I do have some second rounds. Um, so I have Bill, Peter, um, Mike, then Jackie, then Cindy, but I was gonna take my first, if you wouldn't mind. Um, and the questions I had, the questions and comment. Um, so I'll start with the comment. And I know the biggest, what I call overriding, um, theme tonight is, is communication with constituency, uh, communication with the community. I feel like I'm about to throw a house party at your house, Nancy. But, um, we were, we were invited, uh, to have our meetings here, so we could broadcast live to our, the, the people who we serve. And we're sitting in a, a very state-of-the-art facility, and, you know, obviously, you know, 4 o'clock is not what we would call a manageable time to, for us to attend meetings, as I would call it standard norm. But I think a lot of people who can't make our meetings, because I think that we pontificate to an empty room quite often at our board meetings, but it at least gives the community the opportunity to know what we've been working on. So they're taped, they're available online to our, to, uh, the community, they're available on public access TV to the community. So having that understanding of it being, you know, what, what can be done, it can be done in this room. If you can move your meetings to this room, I think a lot of what you're working on will have better transparency. And obviously, I know you're going through a lot of legally sensitive times, and non-public work, and obviously an off-camera environment, but for those things, you can vet on-camera about all the work you do, in and outside of the contaminant topic, I think it will do the community a great service on, on the amount of work that goes into serving our community as you do. So I think that, that would be my personal recommendation to you. As an elected governing body, I find the DMV has my picture, my passport has my picture, very few other places will you find my picture, because I hate it. But I feel it's my responsibility to be a face in front of the camera, so you know my thoughts and you know what we're doing for doing business as a transparent act. Even at my own discomfort, I, I'm willing to do it for the greater good. So, you know, I implore you to, to consider that option as well. Um, so that's just a comment, and obviously it's something that you'll, you'll have to work amongst your board and with the town for their facilities.
I was probably part of the board when that meeting time changed. Um, I will tell you that the perspective has been that we're a very task-oriented little division that produces water for the town. We often need, um, uh, to, uh, have it our meetings, our consultants, our engineers, our hydrogeologists, our legal. And I believe, and, and somebody can go look at the minutes and tell me I'm too old to have been up here, but, um, I believe that that was a large part of the consideration, that we were spending ratepayer money because we were having these people come in after hours. And it made sense, at least for that board. Uh, yes, there's some angst about, we're meeting at 4 o'clock. But those are the reasons. It was, it, it had to do with a very small budget. You guys run 72 million, 40-some million. We run 3.8. And we have ratepayers that pay for our product. We look out for that in that regard, and, and I think that was the biggest driver, just to let you know.
And I think that's something you could survey your constituents on as well. But I think when you're bringing in those geologists, this room is filled with people that have done a lot of homework, and those conversations are probably very valuable to them, and it gives them the opportunity to do further research on, on the information that they're bringing forward, so they can better inform themselves. So...
As I said, I'm not denying, I'm not denying the concerns that have been expressed. The questions have been answered, the requests have been made, and communications, I...
Definitely. But the cameras are on, we'll help.
...is on our next agenda.
So if they can't be here at 4, and it, and 4 has to be the way you do business, which I think that there's definitely feeling that if you could do it differently, we, it would be appreciated by some of the people. But having, having what, having your meetings in context available to those who you serve, I think sounds like it'd be something that they'd like very much. So, and I'm getting a lot of nods in the back of the room. Um, but, uh, in that, in that note, it's my personal opinion, um, but I think it's something that you may want to consider, just, just being able to broadcast it. So, um, that's just my, kind of my comment. Um, and, you know, I know you're talking about wells four and five and filtering those, and that's, I've heard that, you know, I went to the meeting a few weeks ago just to get information, see what's kind of going on. And it sounds like the bigger picture is, and I think, you know, as we had our presentation at our last board meeting, it's the, filtering what you know and filtering what you don't know. So having systems that can do both. Um, you're talking about filtering wells four and five, but that means the other wells are already showing the PFOA contaminants. So a central filtration system, in my personal opinion, and again, you know, this is not a board's position, and probably not yours either, but, um, since I'm saying it, uh, but I think that if you do a central filtration system, it's something that will knock out the contaminants at a, a greater level and probably more appreciated by your consumers. So I don't know that filtering two wells is what people may look for over all of the wells. And again, knowing what would be the price difference between taking those two wells and filtering them versus filtering a whole system. One thing I can tell you for sure, I know nothing about it. Um, and I, I was definitely hired, you know, as a school board member, not to know anything about it, but to hopefully know a little bit more about math. Um, so on that note, you know, that's one of the questions I think it may be valuable to ask to your consumers, is, you know, do they want to take the PFOAs out of the two directly affected contaminant, contaminated wells, or the whole system? And if so, you know, what do they think is a fair price that they're willing to bear to take that on? So that would just be my personal opinion on, on, you know, what to consider. And the other, I did have a question, and the question is, um, if filtration systems are to be installed, how long would it take for, to do design and installation, once, once, um, once, once it's actually decided to do something?
Check me out, Ron. Um, I think well seven and eight, the filtration system, from, um, getting the okay for funding to putting it online was two and a half years. Um, again, a filtration system is a filtration system. It's like a fish tank that you put a filter in. I mean, don't get me wrong.
That's why I'm asking the question.
You don't have to know a lot to understand a lot. But the expenses are there, and the time is there. Uh, I can't sit here and envision a central filtration system because I don't know where the center of the district is right now. I suspect I could guess, but I'm not going to. Very early on, a person asked me about this kind of filtration. I said, do you have $80 million? I don't know whether I was low or high, but you start with those kinds of numbers for, for a central system.
Okay.
I think the district went out for bonding for 4.2 million on the well seven and eight treatment plan. I'm sorry, 4.3.
Okay. And that, the reason I ask that was very selfish for our board, um, because if it is something that is being done and designed, and, you know, once the water is addressed, how long before we'd even realize the benefit of that in our buildings? So that's, that's really the motivation for my question on that. So thank you for that, that clarity. Two and a half years is definitely something we're not looking for. And then, so, um, I'm, I'm getting this from the back. Um, we really can't take feedback like that, so I'm, I'm sorry. But, um, just want to make sure we're having an organic board meeting. Um, but, but to that note, um, those are questions I had, and I know I have second rounds. Um, so I have, again, I shouldn't take my glasses off. Oh, Finley.
Fine.
You haven't had the first yet, so you get the first before the seconds.
I think a lot of the questions that are being asked, um, well, they're all good questions. I don't know if it's an appropriate time for us to be doing it, to what we're, the way we're going about it. I thought tonight it would be to hear from them, where they were in their negotiations, of course, understanding that I probably wouldn't get much out of that, because I get it, how that works. But we're talking about levels of contaminants that we think should be allowed. There's, you know, from non-detect up to 70 right now is on the table. Um, I think village, district is gonna test our waters to what the state standard is. If they can get it down to non-detect, I'm sure they would. I would like to know before a warrant article goes in, or if a warrant article goes in, how much is it gonna cost me to get to non-detect? I have to know all that information. As far as the information for the school district, if you want filtration to non-detect, I would encourage you to put a warrant... I would encourage you to put a warrant article out. Don't need a survey. Put the warrant article out, ask the townspeople if they support filtration system in our school district to a non-detect level with the costs associated with it, and you get your answer of what we want. But right now, I think it's 8:15, and I can be here all night. I don't mind, I go to bed late at night anyhow, but we have other business, and this has become a water meeting, which I kind of didn't expect, and so.
Okay. So to give opportunities, I have Bill, Peter, Mike, then Jackie, and then Cinda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jack, you had indicated in your testimony that it's been indicative of the MVD to seek out the lowest contaminant level possible, and that you were treating this as a crisis. Did I, did I understand you correctly in your testimony?
Anytime you have contaminants in the water and your customers are dissatisfied, you can call that a crisis.
Okay, okay. So from, tonight is November 14th, so from February of 2016 to now, at what particular point in the deliberative process did the water commissioners arrive at the conclusion that they had reached a critical level or a crisis level?
As soon as, as soon as we were made aware of it, even before it hit the papers.
And when, and when was that, when were you made aware of that?
When we could, when we got to the point where we could, okay, I'm being, okay, as soon as we became aware of it, when we could measure it and we knew where we were at, okay, that's when we started taking action, before it hit the papers. We got seven and eight wells ahead of time online. We were able to have enough water supply to shut down wells four and five, take them offline, because they were, they were the issue as far as contamination. Let me see if I can remember the rest of the question. What was, what was the first part of the question, Bill?
The question was, at what, at what particular point during the timeframe of, let's just say, February 2016 through, through tonight, you know, 18 months, at what particular point did the water commissioners come to the conclusion that you had a crisis?
Oh, we started working, I, I kind of like, I'm feeling uncomfortable about this labeling. I mean, because-
I'm not, I'm not trying to label, I'm not trying to fix the blame, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand your thought processes as to how you began to address the issue, just from my own understanding, and hopefully to add clarity to the-
Okay, as soon as we came, became aware of the levels, as you know, we involved DES at the state, okay? We also were pressing the EPA to come outward, what are the safe levels for this contaminant? You know, we deal with many contaminants. There's, there's a list of possible contaminants on the EPA's water list, that, you know, hundreds of contaminants. This particular contaminant, I personally wasn't familiar with. Immediately, we put our engineers on, how can we get the safest water possible, given that we've, look, we've now identified this contaminant? And from a, from a personal standpoint, I felt satisfied that they were working as fast as they could to come up with solutions. The engineers that we employ, being a personal representative, you know, I consider myself not a, a educated water expert. I'm an educated engineer, I have two graduate degrees, but I was very impressed with the, the breaking edge of technology that our engineers deal with. It's kind of like a battle, you know, as, as soon as corporations and manufacturing come up with different chemicals, these tend to find their ways into our air and our water, and we're basically on the battlefield trying to defend. These engineers are trying to deal with these new contaminants and these contaminants that we identify. And one thing that I found that I think most people in this room would have found had they been in the seat I was in, is the fact that the process does move slower than you would expect. I often question the engineers, saying, "Can we do this concurrently? Can we save time? Can we, 18 months, why is, why is it 18 months? Why can't we get it down to 12 months? Why can't we do this?" And using all these systems management experience that I had, you know, basically, they've all thought of these things, and they move as quickly as they can. And it's not, it's not a matter of money. If we had millions to throw at it, it would still take 18 months. And I guess that's part of the frustration that the people of the town are feeling, and we on the MVD board also feel. But we are pressing on, in the best interest of us as consumers of our own water and the townspeople that we owe good, clean, safe water to. I, I, basically, I'm trying to find out what the, the basis of your question is, you know, when you start, are you trying to put a chronological tag on the process?
Yeah, I said, I said, I said that at the onset. I was just trying to understand when you were informed.
Yeah. Well, basically, having lived in the middle of this whole process, and it's tough to be in a process where half of the problem you have, you know, you have like a gag order on you, you can't discuss. But being in this process, to me, it seemed like it went by very quickly. I know for, for some of you, it seems to be dragging on, but for us to deal with this thing on a daily basis, the meetings up in Concord, the meetings with various parties in the whole thing, the meetings with the engineers that are coming up with new technologies, all I can say is, I, I feel very comfortable when we, when we look back on this crisis and write a book about it. You know, then we can have the luxury of studying, well, you know, what could we have done better? What could we have? Is that the kind of-
Well, the reason why I'm asking the question kind of gets to what Board Member Snyder alluded to about, you know, putting, you know, coming up with a number to put before the vote so that you can fix the problem. And having attended the water meeting back on, back at the end of, back at the end of the March was at the beginning. And, you know, I've been through your annual report, I attended the meeting, and, you know, at that particular point, to me, it would have been a unique opportunity to communicate, you know, again, trying, not trying to belabor the communication piece, but it would have been a good, a good opportunity to communicate to people, whether in your annual report or through an addendum, or through some type of handout at the, at the, at the meeting at that time, you know, we're aware of the issue, this is, this is what we're going. I just, you know, a lot of what, what Andy said and what Chairman Burns said tonight about transparency, I, you know, like I said, I don't mean to be redundant, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I think, I think from this point forward, I think you have a very unique opportunity to sit up here at this day, in front of the TV cameras, and be able to communicate to people about what you're actually doing. And even if it's, even if it's just an ongoing agenda item that says, you know, "We met with council today with, with Corporation, Corporation X, and matters are still ongoing." I mean, people need to understand that you're still communicating with council. It's very difficult for the board members to communicate with members in the school community, and the same with the town council, like I've dealt with, to say, you know, "We're, we're functioning under the premise that you're negotiating with the, with the powers that be that are necessary to fix the problem."
Okay, well, I mean, I, that's an easy part of the question to handle. I would love to be used, to have our meetings right here in this room with the cameras and everything, but I'm just that kind of person. I've been on the school board, I appreciate it when people can see the making of sausage in front of them. But I also understand what Lon was saying, and it's true, is we have some very high-priced engineering help, if you will. They come up from Quincy, they come up from different parts of New England to give us the best advice and the best technology that we can get. And to have them come up at eight o'clock at night, knowing that the, their service charges are now overtime charges, I can see where we would get into some, some money that would, you know, start to be outside of, I don't know what, what the, the reasonable amount of money to pay for those projects, et cetera, would be. I, I'm all, this commissioner is all for having the, the meetings at least once, once a year, or once six months, once a quarter. Up here, where anybody that wants to come up and see the kind of things that we do, I will have to warn them that our meetings are about water. It's not always the most exciting thing, and the engineering that we, we listen to for hours at our meetings is very technical. And, you know, without the background of having sat through previous meetings, it might be very boring.
But what I, what I would suggest to you, knowing a certain former councillor in our community, I know he, I know he watches the EDCAC when we meet, I know he watches the Heritage Commission, and I know he watches the playing board and the zoning board. So I think that there are people in town that are generally concerned about what the volunteer boards are doing in our community, so that they could better understand what, what people are doing. If anything, it attracts, it attracts new people to volunteer to a particular cause.
Well, I think-
So I would think it's a unique opportunity for you to talk about, you know, the issues of water quality, because, I mean, we're a bedroom community. There are people that leave here at six in the morning, come home at six at night, may not have the, the time, let alone maybe the wherewithal to dedicate one, two nights a week to, like, like we all do, to volunteer on a particular board, but at least they can watch on community access TV and be able to learn about what the village district does on a, on a daily basis.
I'm all for it.
Okay. I know we've gone very long on this topic, so for the second round, if we could keep them brief, just so we can move on, because I know we have a lot of other agenda items tonight. So I do have Pete, Mike, Jackie, and Cinda. Okay, Mike.
Quick question. Do you guys have, your engineers have a plan already designed, so when all the legal, legal maneuvering is all done, that, and things are settled, that you guys, they're ready to, people are ready to go to work on a plan? Go to work on the system?
It's not totally, it's not totally designed, but it's being worked on, as Jack was, as Jack was mentioning. It's, it's, it's being double-tracked, if you will, to a point. We don't have any money yet.
And I guess then, what's the, if that, the plan that you have, what's the cost of it? And that's the last question I have. The plan that you guys have to date, is there a cost on it that, for the MVD?
I'm not going to be impolite, Pete, but we're not going into that territory.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I just have a point of clarification. It's talked about what the school board was looking at for filtration, and whether we were focused on PFOAs. We are actually focused on filtration of water as a whole, looking at all contaminants and making sure that whatever solution that we were to look at would actually help, not only for today's water, but hopefully in the future too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jackie?
Yep, a yes or no question. Are the DES and the Attorney General involved in negotiations between MVD and St. Cobain in regard to wells four and five?
Not that I'm aware of, but I think you've been around, Jackie, long enough to know how certain things work.
Yes, well, I have a, just a thing to say. I am concerned about Merrimack, as well as other towns in the United States that have gotten caught like this, that a large, private, wealthy corporation can run roughshod over anything in our town. But our water system is just getting increasingly outrageous, I think, to myself and to others. And to exclude people from the meetings, I'm glad that you've been involved anyway, but I think it's just abhorrent that we don't have other representatives, and I just wonder, it just, one, I just wonder about it, really. I think it's just so outrageous for people to get excluded in their own interests.
To the corporations' credit, as reluctant as they've been to perhaps accept full responsibility, what began to be the most positive sense that the MVD, the community should have picked up on was the fact that they accepted any responsibility at all. Having done that, they're the ones on record, they're the ones we're working with. And as I said, the four or five of us that are attending here tonight at your gracious invitation-
Thank you.
-that, that was probably the first indication we had that we had any chance at all. I think, just a matter of politeness.
Cinda?
Board Member Thompson covered mostly that reiteration that I wanted to state. The other thing that I wanted to say was that when we're looking at a filtration system for the potable water at the schools, we're not looking at millions of dollars. It sounds like we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000. So again, I'd like to reiterate the desire for you to try to negotiate that on behalf of the kids in this district.
And when we get those back, we'll be vetting it at a board meeting on camera, so. On that note, I wanted to thank you. I know that, I will take ownership that you didn't have the questions in advance, but I think that the questions came very organically as well, so I think the dialogue was very healthy. I think having all of us together has been a very valuable thing, knowing that the three of us, the three governing bodies united have the best interest of Merrimack at heart. And we thank you for taking the time that you spent with us, the questions that you took on, the feedback that you took so graciously from us, and suggestions, and whatever we can do to collaborate, that's, that's our goal. It's definitely not to point fingers, it's, it's to move forward as a collective community, and I think you would agree to that as well, that that's what we want for this, for this town. We want the best for Merrimack. I think we, there's no one at this table that feels any differently. And we want, you know, that we acknowledge that you feel the same way, and, and we thank you for taking the time.
Well, we thank you also, and if I may be just a bit bold, I'm going to make sure there's anything anybody else wants to say. We thank you very much. I'll speak for myself, and I know Jack, Tony, and Ron have been around tables like this for long enough to know, that if you accept things as acrimony, if you accept things as just pure criticism, you hadn't ought to be where we are tonight. So we will take what we've heard, we'll work with it, we'll work with you, and we'll be gone.
Can't thank you enough. Thanks so much, Lon.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
And we're on to item number four, which is the Merrimack Safeguard update, including long-term commitment to the Merrimack Middle School Student Resource Officer. I invite to the table Dr. Mark McLaughlin, our Safeguard Chair and Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, in his free time. Denise Roy, our new police chief, and congratulations. Tom Prentice, Detective Tom Prentice, who serves as a middle school resource officer. And Betsy Hood, the Executive Director of the National Youth Council. Welcome, and thank you for coming, and thank you for your patience.
Good evening. So I'll also echo the sentiment of how nice it is to be with the two boards tonight. One thing that we've learned as members of Merrimack Safeguard is the power of partnership. And in fact, partnership really lies at the heart of the reason that Merrimack was awarded the Drug Free Communities Grant in the first place. And as we've learned tonight, partnerships are valuable, and prevention is where the smart money lies. So nearly 10 years ago, Deb Wolf- So nearly ten years ago, Deb Wolflein wrote the Drug-Free Communities Grant, anticipating that the present, presence of a school resource officer at the middle school would help create the conditions to act as a positive influence on the youth in our community at a time in their development when their choices could begin to have negative consequences. And possibly also to have a deterrent effect on the contemplation of drug use by our youth. So I thank Debbie Wolflein for her forethought nearly ten years ago, for contemplating writing a grant that would support that position. Nearly ten years later, the community-based group that has formed as an outgrowth of the DFC grant has many achievements to celebrate. Some of them are very public, and some of them no less important, but somewhat less public. And we have much evidence to support the original promise of the grant made ten years ago, that the SRO at the middle school has been and continues to be a highly impactful and proactive prevention strategy. Our goal tonight is twofold. One, to present you some of that evidence, both qualitative and quantitative, to demonstrate the effectiveness of the Merrimack Safeguard group, and also the role of the SRO. And in that spirit of partnership, to ask the town council specifically to contemplate two specific requests. So I'm going to turn to Betsy Hood, and I just must say, Betsy Hood is the reason that we really have and have sustained the grant for ten years. And so, since this might be the last time, probably will be the last time that we'll be able to publicly be together while the grant still is in operation, I have to thank Betsy. She doesn't even live in Merrimack anymore, but her commitment to this community and to this initiative, I just don't think there really are words to describe it. And for those people who don't know Betsy, because she's not here anymore, this town owes a debt to Betsy for the work that she's done. So I really just want to say to Betsy, thank you very much. And obviously, everybody knows Tom Prentice, and if you don't, you should. So I'm going to turn it to Betsy and Tom, or Tom and Betsy. There we go.
Thank you, Mark. First, going to talk about the grant way back, it's on. Back, way back in 2009, I can't believe how time has flown, and we have one more year left in the grant. So I'm going to talk about the first five years, which we got 125,000 each year, and then Betsy's going to talk about the last five years.
Don't look at the man behind the curtain.
How we doing now? All right. So as I was saying, Betsy's going to talk about the remaining five years, and where we're headed after that. So back in 2009, we were awarded the grant, and we didn't know much, much information about it, other than we got a position at the middle school, and there were certain requirements that we had to fulfill. Betsy and I went to Mississippi for three weeks, to a national coalition academy, and they brought us up to speed on action plans and logic models, and how to run a coalition. Part of the coalition is that we needed 12 sectors of the community, as this isn't just a police or a school department, that it's a community that's got to bring this together. So we came back, and with the logic model, we needed evidence-based information. So we used two surveys, one being the YRBS, Youth Risk Behavioral Survey, which was performed at the high school, and then the NOMS, the National Outcome Measured Survey, which is at the middle school. There was two issues that clearly came to the forefront, one was underage use of alcohol and prescription drugs. So I'll first talk about the alcohol, and there were several things that, you know, I could be here all night, the things we've done, but this one kind of stands out to me. We teamed up with Bellamens Beverages, they're a local beer distributor, and they helped us with signage in all of the convenience stores, grocery stores. And so we started with, in Merrimack, there's 43 liquor licenses between restaurants, convenience stores. So we, we wanted to focus more on the grocery stores and the convenience stores, and we worked with all the owners of the stores getting signage on the doors where the alcohol is being sold, little, little signs about laws selling to underage, people that are 21 and over, selling to underage people. Bellamens also helped us out with electronic signs for 21 calendars, so the cashiers could know exactly what birthday you needed to be for 21. And then we came back a couple of years later, and we did an environmental scan of 34 of those businesses, of the convenience stores, and 97% of them still had the signs up on the doors where the alcohol is being sold, signs above it explaining the alcohol laws. And then 81% of the 34% had the alcohol separate from other items, such as sports drinks, beer, excuse me, soda, and like the candy aisle, they kept the beer, it's in one cooler and one cooler only, and then other stuff was out. So we really made strides with stuff, with businesses in town. On the prescription drug side, a big thing that we, we kind of latched onto was with the DEA Takeback. That was one Saturday in the fall, we'd have it at the police station, and people could bring their prescription drugs that were expired, just the pills, to the station, and we'd take care of it from there with the DEA, and it'd be incinerated. And with the first years, couple of years of the grant, we were really amazed on the amount of prescription drugs that were coming in, that we'd take, take off people's hands. So the coalition talked, and we worked with some other groups, and we got the police department a drop-off box, which is located right in the lobby. That went in in 2013, and it's just amazing the numbers that, that box is producing. As of right now, we get 11 pounds per week of prescription drugs. If you take a pill, the weight of one pill, that's a lot of pills coming in, in one week. This recently, a couple of weeks ago, we had the annual Takeback, and we brought up 330 pounds of prescription drugs up to the DEA to get rid of. As a whole, since 2013, we're over one ton of medications been taken off out of people's homes and stuff. So we're really proud of the numbers there. Now, if I wear my SRO hat, a big thing that we, to get to the kids in the school, as the police department, we've always had a close relationship with the school. We have a reading program with the young kids in elementary, we have the PAC program in the upper elementary. In the middle school, we didn't really have anything until this grant. And now we, now that we're in there, we're making strides connecting with that, that age group. Two things that I do with the health classes, when they go into their drug unit, I actually come into the, the class, and we have a drug box at the station that's actually drugs from past cases. And so it's kind of twofold, we bring it in so the kids can actually see what they're hearing about. You know, with technology and social media, the kids are really smart, but you'd be surprised what they don't really actually know, it's just what they hear. So I go in and I talk to them, and they explain the different logs, the laws that affects them, the health of issues involved with the, the drug use. And then second, I come into the social studies class when they go over the Bill of Rights and the Constitution, and I talk about the laws and how they're affected, and, you know, choices that they make now, what's going to affect them down the road. So those are some just brief examples that, stuff that we've been doing. Like I said, we could be here all night over speakers and other different programs that we've, we've done. So now I'm going to pass it over to Betsy to finish up the last five.
Thank you. I think it's also really important to note that the grant itself allowed for environmental change. We aren't allowed to necessarily provide direct services to kids, we couldn't pay for a councillor, it's really about shifting the community, which is why we really have been behind the scenes quite a bit, from what Mark was explaining earlier. We also collected data because we really wanted to prove that having a school resource officer in the middle school was making a difference in order to continue receiving the grant, and we're actually pleased to say, up until this point, this grant has invested a million dollars in its first eight years into Merrimack, and believing in having a school resource officer. Tom's probably too humble to tell you, but 67% of the parents that were surveyed, and that was in 2014, and again, early in 2017, expressed how much having a school resource officer in the middle school has made them feel so much more comfortable about having their students in school. They all know people who have accessed Tom for support, and in addition to just the presence of having the cruiser, I think, in the driveway and the officer there, I think has really set a tone that it's a very safe community, and, you know, a comfortable place for parents to be able to send their kids. The other part of the data that we've collected that we're really proud about is that, over the course of the grant, kids are making much better decisions. A lot of that also has to do with parent influence. Between 2013 and 2015, there's been a 10% increase in the number of parents who are communicating with their kids about the danger. Like, all the research shows that when parents are clear with their children that they should not use alcohol or their drugs, those kids are so much less likely to be tempted to use. So that clarity of parents is significant, and Merrimack parents are really increasing those conversations. Also, in 2009, 17% of ninth and 10th graders had had their first drink of alcohol before they were 13. That number dropped down to 10% in 2013, and it's actually held steady. So kids at younger ages are making much better decisions, and I absolutely believe a lot of that is from the education and support that is provided to them in our middle schools. There's also been a downward trend in the number of students that are riding in a vehicle with someone who has been drinking, and a lot of the work that the high school's done in terms of the mock car crash and other things like that, we think have been tremendously helpful around that. I think as we moved into the second five years of the grant, we really took a good hard look at a lot of the data, and some of what was really concerning to us were the number of Merrimack kids that were really reporting signs of depression and other thoughts around self-harm, and got really concerned about that. And so we really focused the second portion of the grant on strategies, and really trying to take a look at, you know, why are kids either self-medicating with alcohol or their drugs, or, or feeling really isolated, and what could we do to, to build a stronger community around them? And so our target partners for those were really around healthcare providers, school nurses, and the guidance councillors. And we were lucky enough at that point that Julie DeLuca had served on Merrimack Safeguard, and actually came to a training down in Washington DC with me, and she was one of the folks really behind creating the mental health committee for the school district that has just done a tremendous amount of work. So I'm proud to have Merrimack Safeguard take a little bit of credit for at least helping that initiative get launched, and we're really excited, because we do believe that that will be a very important piece of the work going forward, and, and will be a sustainable initiative. And last I knew, also, that group did get a grant from the state of New Hampshire Department of Education for more training and technical assistance for staff members to know what to look for. The next part of what we worked on over the last couple of years was that we all see signs and billboards that talk about drink responsibly, but nobody actually knows what that means to be responsible. So Merrimack Safeguard conducted a series of focus groups around what does it mean to be responsible? We talked to parents, to students, to business folks, you know, people in healthcare, educators, to the police department. And really, the key question that we really came up with, that it is about leading by example, understanding the impact of your actions, and a key one was about asking for help when you need it. You know, don't wait for somebody else to kind of notice you need help, but to feel comfortable enough to ask for help. And one of our members is now a junior in high school, Sarah Heimberg, who for her Girl Scout Gold Star project is taking on what we're now calling the AOK Campaign, which stands for Ask for Help, Offer Help, and Keep It Going. And I know several community leaders have been engaged in a video project that Sarah's working on, to showcase that even as adults and as really capable community leaders, we need to ask for help, and that it's okay to ask for help, and that we also want our children and loved ones to know, if they need help, it's okay to ask. So we're really excited to create this sustainable opportunity in the community, and as soon as Sarah's video is done, plan to really showcase it to any and every group that will watch the video and, and partner with us, to really help folks know that it is okay to ask for help, because we do believe that will help to reduce some of the isolation that's leading to some of the more alarming statistics. In addition, the coalition worked on a Merrimack Help Guide. We're proud that that's available on our website, and also in their little rack at the National Police Department. And so those are some of the things that we believe will help make our effort sustainable. The grant itself ends in September 2019, so we have just started year nine, so there will be one more year after this, and then we will not be eligible for any more federal money from that source. So with that said, Dr. McLaughlin will talk about our sustainability.
So before I do that, I, I want to offer another thanks, and that is to the town council and the school board, who had the good foresight to allow this experiment, really, to go forward. It didn't have to be that you would have allowed Tom Prentice to serve in the role of SRO. It wasn't a foregone conclusion, and every iteration of the town council and the board for 10 years has continued to support and allow that. And so I think thanks is due to both boards, because back to the idea of partnership, we wouldn't have been allowed to have this grant if we hadn't been able to demonstrate that the, the problem of drug use and alcohol use is a community's problem. I often say, the people responsible for the problem don't exist at both ends of McKellwin Street. It, it really is a community problem, and the fact that, in any community, and the fact that the two boards have seen fit to continue to support this is a sign that, that, that you believe that, and that the federal grant tours recognize that. So I thank you. What Betsy said is true. Part of the reason we're here tonight is to sort of remind everyone that in about a year's time, this grant will go away. And so I mentioned asks, and the first and most important ask tonight is for the town council and the police to contemplate retaining the role of the SRO at the middle school once the town reassumes a financial responsibility for, for, for the, for that position. It's not a foregone conclusion, I don't assume that you will do that. And so the first request is for you and your deliberations to consider what we have tried to demonstrate to you, and we'll answer questions and come back if invited, about the impact of the SRO at the middle school. And though it might be seen as an assist to the middle school and the middle school administration in the district, remember that we have the students for six hours a day, and they're everybody else's for the rest of that time. And so it's very important, we feel, that the impact that the role of the SRO has had at the middle school is really kind of incalculable. And I would hope that everyone would agree that when the grant goes, that we've been able to demonstrate that that position is, is really important. And I also, in my, sort of my, my, my thank you round, I also want to say, and I've worked in a lot of places, and I've never worked in a, in a, in a school district that has had better relationships with its police, ever. And I'm not just saying that, it's the truth. And so I've worked with Chief Doyle, and now with Chief Roy, and in all, in, in both of those cases, and with so many others on the Merrimack Police Department, that relationship absolutely every day prevents bad things from happening, and it's hard to sort of prove a negative. How many, how many ODs did we not have because we have Tom at the middle school? How many crimes were prevented? But I don't have that data for you. If you asked it, I, I couldn't provide it to you. But common sense would dictate it, it has had a tremendous impact. And the fact that we have the police department's support in, in, in providing the resource at the SRO is, is really not something anybody takes for granted. The other thing that I just want to take this opportunity to mention is just sort of the, sort of the agreement of the grant. In, particularly in the second five years of the grant, when we reapplied, so as Betsy said, we, we have just about a million dollars, we had to promise at the second five years, really, that we were going to build some level of sustainability to demonstrate to the feds that when the grant money goes away, that all our good initiatives that we've been involved in in 10 years won't go away with it. And some people who've applied, some coalitions who applied for a second year, or second five years, weren't awarded, because they couldn't demonstrate that. And we were able to, to demonstrate that to their satisfaction. One of the ways that that gets demonstrated is by the gradual assumption- One of the ways that that gets demonstrated is by the gradual assumption of part of the salary of the SRO back to the town, so that it would demonstrate that there's a commitment on the part of the town to absorb that role, you know, moving forward. And we have been very happy, Merrimack Safeguard has been very happy to continue to fully fund Tom. But as we talk about the final year of the grant, one of the things that we haven't been fully able to do is to invest in other initiatives that would create sustainability in the community beyond just the role of the SRO, because the lion's share, or really almost all of the money in the grant, goes to support the salary. So one of the things that we'd like to talk to you about tonight, very briefly, is some of the opportunities that we might be able to provide if we had just a little freed-up money from the grant. So if you wouldn't mind, oh, thank you very much. Would you, I think, could I just take one? So what I, what I'm passing out to you now, I want to preface by saying it is merely a draft. What this signifies is some of the things that could be done if the Merrimack Safeguard Committee could have some funds freed up. And the reason I want to say that is because I am welcoming any member of the town council, any member of the police, any member of the community to add to this list or to take away. But just some examples, the New Hampshire Teen Institute is a, and I'll read this just for the sake of those in the audience who might, who might be watching and won't see this. "New Hampshire Teen Institute: Peer Leadership Training for Middle School Youth, Which Results in an Action Plan to Further Improve School Climate and Help Students Make Healthy Decisions. As Participants Age, These Skills Are Transferable to High School." "New Hampshire Teen Institute: Leadership Training for High School Youth to Help Them Build Skills and Connections with Peers Towards Reducing Substance Use and Mental Health Issues." "Mental Health Committee: Allocate Funding for Speakers, Workshops, and Additional Training for Staff, Parents, and Students Based on Their Identified Needs." That's a highly preventative program to help to get to youth and who are in the developing stages of a mental health crisis before it becomes a crisis. "Patricia Conrad, Ph.D., Preventure Training," that's out of Montreal, Canada. "The Preventure Program involves delivering specialized coping skills groups, workshops, to high-risk seventh-grade students identified through substance use risk profile scale. Workshops are targeted to areas of potential risks: sensation-seeking, impulsiveness, anxiety, sensitivity, and hopelessness, and are delivered by trained school staff, enabling the investment to be sustainable." I present this to you not because this has to be these, but what I am trying to suggest to you is that when the funding goes away at the end of 2019, Merrimack Safeguard, as it's currently constituted, goes away too. And we would very much like to be able to invest in some kind of programs or activities or something that could really plant the seeds of sustainability, of owning the constant need to provide prevention strategies to our youth, to all our youth, so that we can be assured, you know, that this has taken root and will take root, and that we all maintain responsibility for that. So the, so the request, and it's coming at this time because it's the budget season for everybody, and it's just to have you contemplate the possibility of taking some percentage of the funding that's provided through the grant to the SRO position to free up funding to allow some of these activities to happen. We're perfectly ready to accept the possibility that the grant would fund Tom for the final year, but I just wanted you to know what some of the possibilities could be if we had, again, just a little funding freed up. So I end it with that, but also just with a, again, with a thank you and a reminder to the community that you live and you, in a community that really benefits from strong, great partnerships, and the PD, and through the PD, the town, and the school district are beneficiaries of that, and therefore, our students are absolutely 100%. I can say we are a better community because of that partnership. So I thank you all, and we're all happy to take any questions that you, you know, might have for us.
Okay. And before I open it up, I would say, on that note, Eileen sent to all of us in our emails, so if you need hard copies, I think she brought some with her, some documentation about funding resources and the SRO's funding mechanism. So if you need copies, Eileen has those, but if not, and you have copies, and...
I need one.
Okay, Eileen, okay, thank you. So raise your hand if you need a copy, if not, if you're working off tablets or whatever. And I will open it up, and I see Andy so far, and then I see Finley and Bill.
And me.
And Nancy. So I will start with Andy.
Sure, thanks. Thanks, Shannon. Just like to state that I've had the privilege for the last nearly five years, and the last couple with Cindy, to be the school board, I'm also, thank you, school board liaison into Safeguard. And it's really, it's really opened my eyes to the difference that Safeguard's making behind the scenes, you know, that if you look at the surveys that are given at the school, and the changes that have been made over the past few years is really dramatic. It's been, not, I mean, the grant is one thing, and the grant to support Tom is important, and I'll talk about that in a second, but just what the whole effort between the town and the community has gotten behind to make differences, to really care about the kids, the students, and the whole community as a whole, was really, really good. We had a, I think for the first time, a town-wide symposium, it was last January, I think it was, where we had all kinds of resources made available. We had a lot of residents come out. I'd like to be able to do that again, grant or not, regularly, to really bring the community together to what resources are available. I think that's really good. But the last comment I have is around the resource officer. Now, before I was a school board member on this, I was a parent in town, and I've sent all three of my kids through the high school, and the school system, you know, completely. I've had more than one occasion where the existence of a resource officer, both the middle school as well as the high school, has paid dividends that I could never be able to explain in terms of issues that have occurred, both with my, my children as well as some of our friends and stuff. So when I look at the grant ending and the fact that the town as a whole would need to fund the resource officer in a continued fashion, I would tell anyone to, to a person the benefits that that is, and that, as we look at our larger budgets and our larger decisions to do, why this is something that we should probably never consider to not carry forward. Mark and Betsy have talked about the sustainability and being able to use some of that last year grant to do some other things beyond just funding. Tom, I think that the grant, one of the things that we didn't really all realize, at least I didn't, is that the last five years of the grant, we were required to show a gradual sustainability change so that the town or the municipality funded the resource officer to free some of that money up, so we could do these other things. And I think that we haven't done a good job of doing it, but if we could do this in the final year, I think that would really be good as well. So I'm really in support and would like to see the funding transition during this final year and then be able to continue it afterwards. So, thanks.
Finley?
Thank you. I believe in the program. I do know, through what I've seen, and the statistics have been worked up and everything, that it definitely works. As a counselor, I'm willing to have conversations about absorbing maybe some of the cost for these type of programs, but I'm hoping that Safeguard doesn't have to discontinue, and I think, Mark, you would suggest that it might. I think it's a program that we could always be active with and should continue it. I'm, I think I have one more year. I'm willing to support the resource officer at the middle school during those budget years while I'm here. And, you know, and so I guess I think that it would be nice for the school district as well to maybe step to the plate on that end, to continue the program, maybe not Merrimack Safeguard specifically, but keeping those type of programs at the fore so that we can continuously monitor what's happening and stay ahead of the curve. So that's, I do believe the program works well, and I'm in support of keeping the resource officer in the future.
Sure. And I next have Bill, I have Nancy, and Peter.
Thank you. Betsy, I was scribbling notes when you were talking, and I apologize. I wrote down a note, $1 million, and I'm trying to figure out, can you, can you just elaborate? Was that like an ancillary benefit from the benefit of having the SRO in the middle school? And if so, if that's the case, can you elaborate how you arrived at that particular number?
The grant itself is $125,000 per year for five years, and so now that we're in year eight, it's just the simple math, 125 times 8.
Okay, okay. The other question, actually more of a comment, we talked about this back in 2015, where the town council, it's really going to be, at least the way where I sit, it's going to be up to the decision of Chief Roy to decide whether to make that recommendation to the council. Like Council of Rothaus, I support Project Safeguard, and I do support the role that, as my daughter would be wanting to say, OP is provided to the middle schoolers. Yes, OP, Office Apprentice.
DP now is Detective.
Now it's Detective Prentice. At the time, it was OP. I apologize. The positive influence that DP, Detective Prentice now has in the middle school. So I certainly, you know, if that was presented, if I should be on the council that time, and if that's being presented, I certainly would be more than supportive of continuing his presence in the middle school, tremendously effective. Thank you.
Nancy?
Actually, I have a question. At the present time, the town is paying for Detective, I just found out he was Detective, Murray at the high school, is that correct?
I'm stuck.
Sorry, Chief Roy.
That is correct.
Cozy room.
Detective Murray's position has always been funded by the town.
Okay. And so the request will be to pick up the middle school Detective Prentice's in the future, which I would support as well. But again, that would be based, as Bill said, upon your recommendation. My question is, has Detective Murray noticed a difference, or has there been a difference noticed, in the behavior or atmosphere as it relates to the establishment of the middle school? Has he noticed a difference in the population of the students as they've gone through the middle school and are now in high school? I'm just curious.
I certainly won't speak for Detective Murray, but he and I have had lengthy conversations about the impact that Detective Prentice has had. He's a firm believer in they're exposed to the police at a very young age, but we do readings, and so it's in a very positive light. It's not always a positive light that Detective Prentice encounters the children in the middle school, but more often it is. So they're exposed to him, good, bad, it's reality, it's preventative stuff that he does on a daily basis, and as Mark had said, it's nothing that we can say that he has prevented this because we don't know. We've heard a lot of people in town talk about how important that his role is because he's an influence on the children. So Detective Murray often says, because the presence of Detective Prentice in the middle school where it really starts being a full-time presence, they've, he's seen that it's more, the rules and regulations are more respected because he sets the tone at a very early age. So it does make an impact, and more positive than negative.
Okay. So, because I would think there would be a transition from the middle school to high school, I was curious. So I just also want to let you know that I will also support the position going forward, and also would strongly encourage the continuation of the Safeguard program by the school.
That's all. Okay. Peter?
You know, I've had a chance to spend time and walk with Tom through the middle school over the years and see his influence with the kids, his relationship with them, and it's been positive. It's been very impressive. I can't say enough about it. And I know that there's been a benefit over the years to the police department directly by having Tom there to handle the issues at the school, and I'm sure Chief Roy can go on about it, but this was, there used to be a time when an issue arose at the school where we pulled the officer right off his patrol beat to go over and handle whatever it was, whether it was the council child, speak with the kids, deal with the substance abuse issue or anything. And now Tom is there, and it sounds like it's getting better, and I think that that's helped, and I think that we can keep those officers on their beats and in their sectors with Tom there. So that's another added benefit to this. So I support it and would support it ongoing.
If I could just say one thing to that, you're absolutely correct. You know, in more, even more so than keeping the people on the street, Detective Prentice is invested in every single child at the middle school. When we were just responding to the school, it was, okay, I gotta go to the school and take this complaint, and they'd have, they'd go through the motions and do what you have to do. But with Detective Prentice there, he can take the time, he can delve into things that a regular patrol officer does not have time to do. So his, and not that we all don't know that there's a benefit, but that is one absolute benefit of having him there.
Mark?
I just, it's a, it's a, I'd just like to make one sort of point of clarification, and it might seem like a small one, but it's actually pretty significant. I wouldn't want anybody on the council or the board or anybody viewing to draw the conclusion that the Merrimack Safeguard group is an arm of the school district. So, because it is absolutely not. What it is, is a community, it's a community grant, and it is comprised of 12 sectors representing Merrimack community, including faith organizations, police, schools, business, youth-serving, 12. And so I just want to be clear that when we talk about the potential of the Merrimack Safeguard Committee sort of taking on a different form, really what that means is that it's the community that has to decide if Merrimack Safeguard is going to continue. For most of the 10 years that this has been in place, it's been shared by people who don't even live in Merrimack. I currently, though I'm very invested in Merrimack, don't live in Merrimack. And so, as I've often talked at the board and anyone who listen, very eager to have other community members, all of whom are concerned, as we all are, about the opioid crisis and other crises, who have opinions about how it should be handled in the community and so on, to take the opportunity to join Merrimack Safeguard and to provide new vision and new blood, so to speak. And that's, you know, a request I have tonight. The current constitution of the committee is a rather small group of people who've done an enormous amount of work on behalf of the community. So it's really not an arm of the school district at all. The school district is one member of a 12-sector committee. So, small distinction in a way, but very important for people to know. Thank you.
And one of them is healthcare, by the way, the healthcare community. So, and that's a big one, obviously, when we're talking about the opioid crisis. You saw the floor, Peter. Mark, Peter?
Is there an aspect, and I'm not aware of it, regarding, I know it's not substance abuse issue, but awareness of physical abuse, sexual abuse, or domestic violence for the kids within the system?
So, yes. And it, the grant itself is very focused on substance misuse, but, as Betsy pointed out, one of the things that we've learned over the course of the nine-plus years of the grant is that oftentimes, the tendency for self-medication that then becomes an abuse of a substance stems from something that happened earlier. Whether it's just the natural mental health challenges that people experience that are as biological as any other ailment, sometimes it's home abuse, sometimes it's family dysfunction, sometimes it's economic dysfunction that causes students to feel the need to act out. And one thing that Chief Roy, I am just among the many things that I'm grateful for, is she articulates a lot, the fact that the police involvement, not just in Merrimack but in police work, is sort of handling as a reaction to things that happen. And what her, I should allow you to speak... And what her, I should allow you to speak for yourself, but I mean, but you've said to me so often that one of the values that Tom presents as an SRO is that it's, there's a prevention quality that we can, that we can and should endorse and support. And that the emergence of the District Mental Health Committee is entirely an offshoot of the recognition that, rather than just reacting constantly, that if there are things that we can do to train teachers to recognize signs at an earlier age of mental compromise, or to help parents to recognize that in their own children, to help community members in general, that's what the AOK campaign really is all about, helps to get at that prevention thing. And that's really what Merrimack Safeguard is morphing into in a way, though its charge is really about substance misuse.
Are there any other questions from the board? Michael.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to make a statement. I wanted to thank the Merrimack Police Department for their dedication to the school district. I also want to thank the town for collaborating with the school district and having this resource in the schools, and just wanted to say my appreciation. Thank you.
Betsy.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one additional comment, that I was presenting at a conference out in California for the National Prevention Network in September, and one of the keynote speakers said something that really stuck with me, and said that isolation is the precursor to heroin use, but the antidote is community. And I feel like that's exactly what this group is all about and what Merrimack is really trying to do for their children and families.
Excellent. So any other questions? Comments? I don't think we could close on a better note. So, thank you, Betsy. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you very much.
And I always do this, so when we have an absence in the board, I forget to mention it until at least the fourth or fifth item. So Naomi Schoenfeld is excused from tonight's meeting because she is under the weather, so we hope she feels better very soon.
I know, I know how that feels.
Oh, my goodness, every time, every time. So if you would not mind indulging, we do have invited guests for the table, so if you would not mind if we moved election facilities review to the end because Lynn Christensen will not be able to make it tonight, and so we will definitely move up to fields needs. Is that okay for everyone else?
Yeah.
Excellent. So we will move to fields needs review, so I invite to the table Director of Parks and Recreation, Matt Gasparius, Rich Hendricks, the Planning and Building Committee Chair for the school district, Tom Thornton, the MYA President, Merrimack Youth Association, and Mike Susie, our new Merrimack High School Athletic Director. So, welcome all. So, the reason we found it so valuable for you to be here, I know that, you know, we've had challenges over the years with fields and how we're going to manage the needs of the community. In 2010, a report came out, and one of the things that was embedded very strongly in that report was how we were going to lose access to, we had the potential of losing access to fields, and that seems to be starting to come to fruition. So things that we depended upon that were community-based resources that were afforded to us are going by the by, but the demand for student activity doesn't. And I think we just came off of a very, I'm glad we reworked the meeting, so we came off a very powerful topic about youth risk behavior. I think when you talk about activity and sports, this is a very positive environment for students and the youth of our community. So I welcome you all, and I know that Mike Thompson stepped away, but he's also the liaison for the Parks and Rec Committee for the school district, and I believe, is it Peter Albert is the new Parks and Rec Liaison for the town council. And so with that, I definitely want to hear your thoughts about long-term needs and goals based upon where we were in 2010, where we are today, and where we're going. So welcome all.
We, let's see, I've been here coming up on the end of my fourth year here now, so we've, and probably for a little over the last year, the Park and Rec, and in conjunction with the Park and Rec Commission, has started relooking at this field study from back in 2010. You know, we had a lot of other projects that took higher priority, and it took us until last year to get to that point. But we've kind of started revisiting that list because we do have those challenges. You know, all of our fields get heavily used, they don't get time to rest because there is such a demand on them, and we all kind of try our best to work together to kind of minimize those challenges. But the short end of it is, we don't have enough fields. And so, like I said, we started about a little over a year ago, kind of relooking at that study and trying to come up with some options. And we haven't made a whole lot of progress because there aren't a whole lot of viable options that aren't extremely expensive. And so we're just starting to get into the, how do we deal with that?
Back in April, the Planning and Building Committee did a report on school district-owned properties, both the actual physical school locations and at off-site properties that the school district owns. The schools are pretty kind of tapped out. We did think possibly, the Thorntons Ferry School could accommodate one field, one rectangular field. If you think about, it would be between the school and the road. The con might be you have to put up some kind of a netting to prevent things from going into the road. It's not next to the road, but it's, you know, maybe 100 feet away. But it is there. I walked it, it's fairly level ground, you have accessibility to an electrical system, you have water, and most importantly, you have a pretty fairly large parking lot. That's something that could be explored. The Athletic Director will be thrilled that we have looked at enhancing one of the fields, and that is the high school, and looking at very hopefully near future for a turf field. Not an inexpensive project by any stretch, and what we did do a report on about a year ago was also different ways to fund it, not necessarily 100% taxpayer-funded. In many communities, they found some pretty neat ways to do it. What it does increase is utilization, with a huge capital letters. Excuse me. Primarily probably used by the school, but now that you have a field that can be used a lot more, the worst thing this man can face is a horrible thunderstorm, rainstorm on a Friday night, because now you have not only a sloppy football field, but you've also ruined it for the soccer teams, possibly lacrosse teams, and just further down the road. When you look at kids and their desire to go on and compete, you're giving them a horrible disadvantage when you play on a crummy, mud, sticky field. And all their competitors are being compared at the next level to basically a pool tabletop. It's perfect, it's flat, it's well manicured, and it's usable 24/7. And it's got to affect your ability to play at your best level. But as a benefit for the entire town, you've got to feel that now you're not, oh god, it's going to rain, and the Athletic Director is, you know, well, I gotta take this out, and they can't compete, then they've got to go, and it just makes it a nightmare. You also have a field, like I say, that can now be open to the town, irregardless of the weather. You can put a snowplow on it and plow it during the winter if you so choose. So that's one area we looked at. We looked at two properties that the school district owns. We looked at a field actually across the street from Thorntons Ferry, very quickly discounted it, it's basically wetlands. It's got a stream running through it, that's the 13 acres off of Continental Boulevard. We looked at the Timmins property, which is kind of a, has been kicked around for years. It's some 40 acres. And this is, to me, the antithesis of this school board and town council meeting. It can accommodate at least one field, there's a fairly, very level part of it, it's about half the size of Bishop Field, so you could expand it to a field. Where the town comes in is it's absolutely useless because the accessibility is why I discounted it. It's at the corner of South Babuza Lake Road and Babuza Lake Road. It's a horrible corner, and I gave the school board an actual diagram of the traffic control devices that you would need. When I walked through it and examined it and pulled out, it was literally my life in my hands trying to make a left turn, because you're trying to come to the left, and you've got a horrible left turn, and, police chief left. Cars are not going 30, and to get out of there, you need someone to say, okay, make sure you're stopped. But you have to have a stop here, and you have to have a stop over here, because by the time this traffic is here, you've got collisions all day long, never mind coming in through South Babuza Lake Road, South Babuza. So it's a little bit, this is where I think the town is, like, help us find a way to get into that property. Because if you can, and obviously traffic control devices aren't free, that property becomes a little bit more flexible to be able to be used. It does involve some excavation, there, half of it is a ski slope. But there is some flat land, and it could be done. But believe it or not, it was accessibility, just you cannot get in and out of there safely now, whether a major reconfiguration. That might be, you know, trying to convince the homeowner to let them use, you know, a little bit of the street, because these people, it's a residential area, and they didn't bargain for, excuse me, a field in use. So, you know, it's got some consideration, but this is an ideal situation where the town has to help us and say, listen, we got something, but we're going to need some help because we can't create traffic control devices and we can't, you know, try to find access into it. Yeah, pretty much, all the other schools are, you know, pretty much full. So Thorntons Ferry, high school turf field, possibly Timmins property, and depending accessibility.
So from an MYA perspective, we have, I mean, we love to see rectangular fields, utility fields. We have a lacrosse program that is building and continues to grow. We have a soccer program that fields about 800 kids in the spring and 800 kids in the fall. So, you know, we have always had this, that we wanted more fields, utility fields. I know right now, we share a field, we have Reed's Three, which is the lit field down at Reed's Ferry, off Lyons Road. We share it with the AD, Mike Susie, because he doesn't have a home field. He has to go out of town to have his, you know, to play his home games, so he, you know, he plays some of his JV, some of his freshman games on our Reed's Field. But we're also concerned about over-usage, when it rains, things like that. I mean, we need to protect the fields that we have. Now, if I look from our football program, down at Wasserman, and Matt can contest this, I mean, he put a water spigot there for us, and we took 1,000 feet of hose because on the dry of the summer, kids who had asthma couldn't breathe. So, because there's no grass, it's all dust. So our football, football volunteers would go down about an hour before each game and, you know, wetter the field, just to keep it, so it's, you know, keeps the dust out. So in that aspect, there's a health concern, and I've filtered a lot of those questions as well. So, you know, from our aspect, it's football, yes, they beat the field, they ruin the field, but, you know, if we had some grass to start, probably wouldn't ruin it as much. But we need it from a football standpoint, from a soccer, and from a lacrosse as well. This past year, we lost Anheuser-Busch, because we pulled out of Anheuser-Busch because we are the ones doing all the work to Anheuser-Busch. The town was doing the work, we were doing the work, and other programs are from out of town, Nashua and surrounding towns, were benefiting from what we were spending. We've had nets ruined, we had, you know, things like that, balls stolen. So that's why we pulled out. So we lost, and that was a decision of the executive board to pull out, and the soccer program to pull out. But that was a big decision to make because we lost a utility field, we lost a soccer field. So, you know, we have Albert that we use, that, you know, we contract with Albert in the town as well, and that's one field. But now we have, you know, lacrosse coming in on the springtime saying, hey, we need more fields, because now we have six or seven traveling boys' teams, and now we have four or five girls' teams, and it keeps growing. So that's the perspective from the MYA side, that we could use more fields. I know at one point, I haven't looked back, but way back when, I know there was a field you should study done at Horse Hill. I don't know where that's gone or where that is, it's probably in my emails, dug up somewhere. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just from the high school perspective, obviously I've been on the job for about 15 minutes, and I'm still learning. But I did get through, you know, the latter six weeks of the fall season, and, you know, most of our challenges certainly are impacting our soccer program more than anything else in the fall. But I can see some effect that what we've used for fields in the fall can most certainly impact, you know, baseball down the road, certainly lacrosse as well. Just to put things into perspective, our soccer teams played 18 games away from home that were home games. So there were nine varsity games and nine JV games played at the GPS turf fields in Bedford that were technically Merrimack High School home games. Girls varsity soccer, girls JV soccer played six of those, boys JV, boys varsity soccer played three of those, to the tune of $6,000. So we spent $6,000 to send our teams to Bedford to play their home games. That certainly impacts, you know, obviously they don't practice on turf field, so it's going to impact the way they play, but it's also going to impact our ability to get their fans to the games. You know, so oftentimes, you've got some parents on the sidelines cheering them on, and roughly that's about it. And that's unfortunate for those athletes that have spent so much time working on their craft and really trying to perfect things. The other impact that I see down the road, and I walked the fields with Tom Tussow about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, is where our football team practices, which is basically on the outfield of our JV baseball field. Now that field needs some significant repair in order to get ready for the baseball season. No fault of the football team, football is what it is, and they have to do certain drills, and they do move things around so they're not digging up the same areas all the time, but nonetheless, they are digging up areas. And it certainly is going to have an impact without some significant repair on that field to our JV baseball program as well. You know, it's tough when our soccer teams can't practice at home either, and they don't, they practice at Reed's Ferry, and so that presents some transportation issues as well, trying to get, how do we get the younger kids over to Reed's Ferry for a practice at 3 o'clock? We also had some transportation issues with getting our varsity and JV teams over to GPS fields. You know, in particular now, where we have a shortage of bus drivers, you know, we're allotted only so many buses, it became a significant challenge for us earlier in the fall, more so than later in the fall, but it certainly was a challenge to provide some transportation for our younger kids that don't drive, so.
Okay, I forgot, Michael and Peter, and I see everyone else.
Thank you very much. I just want to put out there that I think that some of this conversation may have been brought forward because of my involvement with the Parks and Rec Committee. I will also put out there that I have been a volunteer for the MYA for soccer as a coach for the past seven or eight years now. My child is a soccer player for the travel team of Merrimack. I do feel that this is a need that our community has, just community pride for one thing regarding the teams that are actually having to travel outside. I don't foresee my focus on fields being much of a benefit to my child before he grows out and goes beyond this town. However, it is a commitment of mine for this community to help to hopefully push this forward, even without my kid needing it in the future. I appreciate everybody's coming tonight. I know that we've talked about the Timmins property a little bit further. I feel that accessibility is definitely a challenge, but there might be options there that we can review further. There's the Dray Court cul-de-sac as possibly as an access or an entrance or even an exit in one way, or some other options. Obviously, we'd have to look at that overall, but I think that by walking, myself and Matt actually went and walked that property, we feel that there's probably, possibly, two utility fields, full-size utility fields on that with the parking on the slope that's actually going down. I'm not sure if you followed, but the school board actually did approve the ability for us to actually survey that land, if we can be done at no cost or assistance of the town if they have the resources. So I know that it's something that we have not talked beyond the Parks and Rec, it is something that we're looking at, it is something that we would like to see if it's even feasible. It might end with the survey and just not go any further. But I think that is showing that this plan from 2010 called out for, I forget exactly how many fields it was off the top of my head, but I think it was near 20.
It's a drain.
Yeah. It is a drain, but we have to start somewhere. We have the lacrosse program that I don't even think was taken into account in 2010. I also will say that Merrimack has the second-largest soccer program in the state, just to put that out there. to put that out there. I traveled to many communities, obviously with my son's soccer team, and some of the, some of the fields and some of the complexes that I've seen are just beautiful. I mean, these, these communities are able to put on events, be able to bring in many different people to the town. I think that it's something that is missing from this community right now and I, I think it's something that we need to focus on. I know that as a town, there's been a conservative effort for conservation land in the past and I think that it's, at this point, that as a community, we need to shift that away from conservation land and actual conserving land for multipurpose use. Obviously, that's an ask for the town council being that, but I think that the school board would want to be part of that because it's a problem for not only the town, but also obviously for the school itself, so. But I appreciate you bringing this forward, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss a little bit further and see where we can go from here.
Peter.
You know, and it's probably, and I missed the discussion, but that piece of property up on Babusick Lake Road near South Babusick, it's 40 acres of land, it's really only gonna fit, from what I'm hearing from Mike, is maybe two fields max. What about the sale of that land, if, if you can, and I don't know if it's, the sale of that land to, and then use that funds to purchase another more suitable piece of property? That might be a thought, to do that, and there's also, as I recall, right Ave along Horseshoe Pond, there's, there was fields that were across from the Superfund site, which was New Hampshire Plating. But those fields were there and I think they're owned by the MYA, are they owned by the YMCA? And was there some, some wording that the town can use that property? Tom, I see you shaking your head, so I'm looking at you.
There was some history.
Yeah, it was, it was an agreement, I think, with the town and the MYA, YMCA, but the YMCA said, yeah, you can use the fields, but you have to take care of them, you have to maintain them.
And they would still own it, but we would maintain it, right?
And then the town said, no, we don't, that's not a good deal for us.
Would they, you know, maybe with the purchase of, the, the sale of that property on Babusick Lake Road, maybe they entertain an offer, maybe there could be a discussion? Because that's, that's a pretty good-sized field, I mean, if I look back, you could put maybe three fields on there at least?
Sounds right.
So, that's just food for thought.
And then Finley.
No, I would just say along, kind of that train of thought would be, so we don't own it, but maintain it, but we still have, would have fields to use. It sounded like the problem at Budweiser was that other areas were coming in and causing damage to our equipment and things like that, but in this YMCA situation, would that be the case as well?
Yes.
That other towns would use them and we would still risk then damage to our property, but we would have to maintain it.
Yes, and they, and they made it very clear, I think it was Manchester Y, wasn't it? And they made it clear that they would be in control of who played on the fields.
Okay, all right, got it.
Like if Nashua, Manchester could use the fields.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that-
We said, no, thank you.
I would say that if, if that wasn't the case, then maybe that would be an ideal situation, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they made perfectly clear that they were gonna have first priority to the fields.
That's right. The more we talk about it, the more it comes back, that's right. Why we didn't jump at the chance to run their fields for them, at our cost, wow. So I had Finley and then we'll do some seconds, so I think, Michael, you're next.
Every time I think of the Wright property makes me angry and it reminds me why I'm angry at the YMCA, because they disgust me that they've allowed that property to go the way it has, but that's another point and I don't want to rain on that parade if we could get that property, I suppose, but there, there's kind of two issues here. The school district, I sit on the planning and building committee with Rich and, and we've gone over the turf field situation, so I know most everything about that damn field now. And the reality is the differential in price was like $25,000 annually, but that didn't take into account the $6,000 we're paying for fields to use other people's fields now and so really, it, it's a money maker, a saver of money for the town if we do have that turf field built. It would enhance, multiple uses could happen without detriment and it's, on the school side of things, it's a great idea and the town should pass that whenever that comes up in the, in the order and goes on the ballot. From the town side, there are a few properties. One, I didn't even remember why we had it, but there was some tree cutting that went off on Atherton, John Lane, Chamberlain Road, and I was wondering why we had that chunk of land there that the town owned and it was because it was put aside for field use. We didn't sell it off for that reason. A lot of conversations would have to happen with neighbors and everything because when those trees came out, there weren't a lot of happy people about it. But, but that is a parcel that the town owns, they could have fields right next to the Turkey Hill complex. Another parcel is Horse Hill Nature Preserve. I walked that piece back just over 10 years ago and there's a section that was called out during the definitive plan for the Horse Hill Nature Preserve and, and that would cost some money to do and it'd have to be really looked at, but that is another place, I think they had two fields that they could put in there. Parking has been expanded down at, on Amherst Road there and it, you know, that's also a possibility. I, I don't know where we'd find, you know, parcels of land, Pete, but I'm, I'm all ears for that type of thing if this, if that could happen with the Timmons property, I don't even know, the Timmons property, but.
Yeah, just, Finley responded back too, is I'd love to hear from the school, school board members on, on their feelings on selling that property. If that's kind of taboo and they don't want to do it, I'd love to know that, but if they, if it's an option, maybe we should go further with it.
I just wanted to highlight on Finley that, because it was a rather long discussion on turf fields, but that was one of the overriding things is, all these company, or all these towns are hosting events that bring in people to their town. We have hotels, we have restaurants. You know, Columbus Day, every hotel in this area is full of Nashua, you know, and Merrimack is sending, you know, teams there, which is all fine and well, but this would be a chance to, you know, actually have something built that would actually, you'd have a check coming in. I, I'm not saying it's gonna be huge and substantial, but it's gonna be money coming in. Hey, would you like to use this beautiful, nice turf field with the lights, we, we've got beautiful bleachers and, and we have everything every town could do, we just, right now have a field of mud. So just to reiterate that there's, it's just more than, you know, keeping kids happy and, you know, safer and all that stuff. It's, it's, we can look at a money maker.
So I will say my kind of response to the Timmons question that you had, and that is it never came up until you brought it up, to sell it, to, to buy other things. The one thing I would say as a district is, when there's district fields, absolutely, we would, you know, wherever we have facilities that we could develop and, and for our teams, we will do that. We're definitely not real estate moguls. So, you know, that's definitely not come up. It's, it's a property we had in the event that build-out was aggressive and then you're building some very large MDU complexes as well, so we always keep, that, that, that property was purchased with the consideration if we need to build a building on the, the south end of town, I think, when we first procured it. What's our future now? It's, as I said, it's never come up so that, to, for us to have a position as a formal board, very, very premature. But, you know, to that end, you know, I think we're surveying and again, we're not surveying, so I'm gonna reiterate that. The school board allowed the Parks and Rec Committee to survey, and I just want to clarify some of Michael's points because he's saying we, as being part of Parks and Rec, but Michael is the school board liaison to the Parks and Rec, so even on Parks and Rec, he's school board. So, we have given Parks and Rec the permission to survey that piece of property for consideration of, of the potential fields. So that's the other thing I want you to bring up, but yeah, we never, ever considered selling it to buy something else, not even came up. So, we would have to look at that as a future agenda item. Finley then.
I wait, no, I can wait.
Okay. Michael and Finley.
This just carries on, so now I'm gonna go to my school board liaison with the Parks and Rec. There actually is a subcommittee that's actually spoken about fields too, just because it's obviously a larger issue. In the subcommittee, we have reviewed other plots of land that are available, there's plots of land actually next to the Greater Woods that are 40 acres, I think there's like four or five of them that someone owns in that area, which might be feasible. We talked about purchasing, we talked about, you know, with the school sell, so it has come up, but it has not been presented to the school board, just because we felt the survey would probably be the, the best bet and either way, now it's surveyed, it's either good for this, either good for the actual fields, might be, the school board might be able to take other actions where the school board would just sit on it, so. But, it's a good point.
I have a question, since I think we're all, oh, I'm sorry, Finley.
No, I was, I was gonna say, the difficulty for the school district, I've, for years have been concerned about the possible legal liability when you have non-drivers going in their friends' cars, going to Reed's Ferry to practice and all, and, but the difficulty is, the raw land nearby is almost non-existent and we've jammed a 1960s high school in a piece of property that can't expand to 2017 needs, I guess. So, kids will have to be transported and I, you know, fields that are purchased, it would be surely best served if, you know, you sell off the Timmons for school district fields, but the town has always had benefit of those when they weren't used, so it's, it works both ways.
Right. So the question I had was, I know your subcommittee's been working, how often do you use the document from 2010?
That is actually what we've, we've been working off of.
So have you actually reviewed all the properties that were reviewed in this document to see if any were still viable? I know one that came up was the, the property north of the homestead.
We, we had discussed that, there are actual current plans for a developer to actually build that all.
Flatley, thank you.
Flatley has a full plan, we have not ruled it out of asking Flatley for something, maybe giving land or putting facilities on those land, but we have not actually moved forward as a, as a committee to make that request to the town council, whether that would be feasible.
Right, and that was actually what came up during, because I was the board liaison back in 2010 for this.
That would be a beautiful sports complex.
I was young.
And I would, and I would throw a caveat emptor to that particular statement because DES has asked Flatley to look at remediating that particular parcel based on its proximity to Corporation X and Wells 4 and 5. Not to, not to throw-
Oh, there's that.
Not to throw acid rain on the parade. But the, like, may I continue?
Of course.
Thank you. There were, the, the Mass Road parcel and I think the State of New Hampshire parcel off of Back River Road are certainly worthy of, of exploration, if only because of its, of its location to, to some of the major roads in town, their minimal impact to other Obviously, I, I agree with the analysis as it relates to the state of New Hampshire. They came to us last year talking about 10-year, their 10-year plan, they were gonna be expanding the roadway there by Merrill Marotta's Bridge up to the, up to the tolls and they're gonna go out to three lanes and I had begged them to go to four and they're like, nope, it's gonna be three and that's gonna be it. So if, if that's gonna be it and there's no expansion plans in the future, I think there's an opportunity to be had to have a conversation or reaching out to our legislative delegation to see whether or not there, there's an opportunity to work with the state to address some of our athletic field needs at that particular location.
Okay. Did you have a hand up, Eileen?
I will just like.
Oh, they'll address it, that's fine. So I guess the other question I had is, is there going to be a new and exciting, new and improved document that would kind of fall along these lines, that would reassess the needs based on things like the evolution of the lacrosse program and sending varsity students out of town to do home games, which, yeah, opinions. So on that note, will there be an updated version of this, so, because I think this is an important guideline and I'm fortunate that we didn't get to do anything a lot with it in 2010, but long-term to have something that, again, going back to transparency, that we can look at the community and show how we vetted the process and established a need and, and justify the request. Michael?
I think we have a document that we can work off and not have to actually reassess at this point. I think at this point, we, we have a clear documentation that we're, we're weak on fields and if we just start chipping away one or two instead of actually having to go back and redo what's already been done, I think is, to be blunt, a waste of time.
Just update, not, not redo.
Well, I mean, it's, I, I'm just, I'm personally, not anybody else, but I'm just saying that I think at this point, if we can just start chipping away at like one or two fields and start building out, I think that there's enough here to show that we need it, instead of having to re-update a, any of this. Because even now, all we're gonna have to do is go in here and add lacrosse and it's, it's spending time on adding information that's not needed in order to move forward. So I'd rather move forward as a community member than spend time on redoing it.
Any other? Okay. Well, I'm gonna have to agree to disagree because I think when you look at the needs and, and the costs involved, that I think having a transparency and a vision and a, and the documentation is, is going to be very valuable. The one thing I think, you know, if I, if I had to, if I had my druthers on this, I would say that, you know, we, we should be meeting regularly as a joint board, but when we do, this, this should be coming up regularly. And on that, where are we, you know, where are our needs, where are we at, what movements are we making based on things like we're doing and our district and town is doing that, that are addressing those issues? And just being able to follow on to it. I, I don't want to do this every seven years and have nothing different. What I do think is, I want to do this and then the thing that's missing with the Fields Needs Plan is the action items that we sign off on as a collective unit, you know, where, where, you know, we agree that, you know, we need to move on these needs and how we're gonna move on these needs. In 2010, the plan was to ask to bond a chunk of money to get a bunch of those fields done upfront because the need was there at that time. And then take long-term planning, which is also in this document, to go into long-term and then further long-term build-out of, of Merrimack needs. So always keeping this as, as a guide, but the guide right now is a little dated, you know, whether properties change, whether viability of properties change because of things like Corporation X, that we need to make sure we're doing enough to be transparent. So when we're asking the communities to support these initiatives, we don't, we, we show the tangible need, the, the impact on the community and, and where their tax dollars going to get the job done. So I, I do feel very strongly that this is a valuable, valuable document, so. Did you have your hand up?
I did. I was just gonna say, and I'm kind of in agreement with you, which is, yes, it needs to be updated, there, you know, and we can kind of do that concurrently with trying to move forward, but we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
We're, you know, realistically, we've been trying to go through the, the existing properties and just figure out where we are with, you know, and, because a lot of them, quite frankly, aren't really all that viable and, and so, yeah, there is some things that gotta come out and things that gotta be updated, you know, updated numbers and those kinds of things. I think it's gonna show a greater need than what that original report showed, because I think it's just, everything's growing. And then gives us that, that next step, but, yeah, we're not there just yet.
I, I would piggyback, I, I like, Mike, it's direct, let's get things done, because like you said, this is eight years and absolutely nothing's been done. However, what was key to this was there were immediately town council members on it, school board members on it, Parks and Rec Commissions on it, and MYA committees on it, as opposed to coming back every so often. If they, and I hate creating committees, but this might be one that, here we all are, he shows up, he shows up, he shows, he can immediately tell, like, no, that's not happening, or, you know what, I need this, I need that, boom, and you can update this very quickly. Again, no, you're not gonna go through 80 pages of, you know, fill in the blank, but if you bring that up and you immediately get that committee, which you were part of eight years ago, boom! You know, you've got instant feedback and, you know, he can get back to the town, you know, Finley's on it and go back to the town council and say, hey, this is what we thought, boom, 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 boom. You know, hey, Peter, you know what? They thought more about selling that property. So as opposed to, it sounds like the Parks and Rec, well, we'll do it. Well, no, this is, this is the epitome of, of the collaborative effort. Here's the four groups that you should be immediately getting in charge of, getting assembled. Just my two cents.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from either board? Seeing none, we thank you for your time and we look forward, oh, I'm sorry, but, but wait, there's more. Eileen just wants to make sure that everyone's aware that our capital reserve funds, we do have 124,000, almost 125,000 for athletic fields already saved up. Yeah, that won't get you much, but at least it's something.
It's a start.
We also have over $400,000 that's dedicated to a line item called Land Bank. No specific purpose, it's just called Land Bank. So I would imagine that monies could also be allocated towards dedication.
That would be open for discussion.
I agree with you, Madam Chair.
So, so the town council Timmons version, so that's your, that's your version. We'll get back to you, you'll get back to us.
One man's opinion. One man's opinion, Madam Chair.
Excellent.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you for the clarification as well. Thank you so much, guys. And Matt gets to stay. So, and thank you for, for making it tonight, we're really happy you're here. So, I didn't remember. Oh, excellent. So, actually, Eileen will be joining Matt in the O'Gara Drive dis- discussion, so, um, we'll, we'll turn the mic over to you, Eileen, and, uh, if you could introduce, um, the topic from your perspective.
Okay, um, what we are basically talk, and everyone here understands this, but this is for the people at home. This has been, um, an ongoing, um, discussion for, since I've been here, which is about seven years, um, and it, it keeps getting brought up, and then it keeps, then it lingers, and then it drops, and then we try and get information on the state and all these various things. But the point really is, um, we received two grants for, um, a piece of property that's owned by the school board on O'Gara Drive. These were land, water, conservation funds. Um, we got one in nineteen seventy-three, one, they were fifty-fifty matching grants, very small amounts, twenty-one thousand, twenty-one thousand on one side. And then, um, we got a secondary grant in nineteen eighty, seventy-eight, seventy-three, and eighty-eight. We got a secondary grant. So, the first grant was for, um, for the athle- let me just grab this, I'm sorry. It's past my bedtime. Um, so, um, the first grant that we got was in nineteen seventy-three, and it was for the cost of construction of four tennis courts and a natural ice skating rink. The second one that we got, um, and it was a matching grant, thirteen thousand five hundred from the Federals and thirteen thousand five hundred from us. So, um, then, uh, in nineteen eighty-seven, we got another grant to rehab those tennis courts, um, and add lights. So, those are the two grants that we got. Now, um, we ran into a problem with this, because, um, we've, uh, we started adding things to this piece of property. This, the town has, um, for many, many years, at least twenty-five years, has leased this pro- has a long, long-term lease with the school to, um, to use this property for recreational purposes. So, it was, it's owned by the school district, we had long-term agreements to, um, for the, to use this property, that's where we put the tennis court, that's where we put the skating rink. And, um, when we got to the second grant, where we did the rehabbing and all that kind of thing, somebody wasn't reading the fine print, because there's an in-perpetuity clause that took us a couple of years- Three years to try and unravel how the heck we got out, how, how we could get out of it. Because this, um, it became so onerous that everything we added onto that parcel, including the skate park, um, including the basketball courts, that had nothing to do with this grant, all got wrapped into this per- in-perpetuity thing. And then they would need to be replaced, um, at a fair market value of what a baseball, basketball court would cost, what a tennis court would cost, et cetera, et cetera. And I, and you'd have to actually buy new land, um, because what they, the idea behind it was, we don't want you to, we want you to add the new value for value you've taken away. So, if it was a, a blank piece of land, um, you already own the land, we want you to buy another piece of land to put the tennis courts on, to put the skate park on, to put all those kinds of things. So, to make a really long story short, after we unravelled this whole thing, and we finally got it in writing, um, several iterations of it, from the state and federal government about the grants and how they affect this property, it was determined, because we wanted to do a couple of things. The first thing, the tennis courts are atrocious, they have been for years and years. It's been disputed whether or not that is even an appropriate site for those courts, because the ground keeps shifting. And, you know, the question remains, I don't know, engineers have actually gone down to look at it, but, um, it was decided by the town council that they were not going to, um, replace those, those tennis courts. So, um, we then went back to the school board and said, what, school board, what would you like us to do? If we told you we were not gonna put those tennis courts back, what would you like to see on that spot? Do you want it plain land? Do you want, what, what is it that you want? And the answer was, we want you to demolish it, we want you to bring it back, I'm paraphrasing, we want you to bring it back to just natural dirt or whatever it once was. So, um, so then, um, so now we come, so we have two, two deadlines. One is the, um, the deadline that relates to, um, the termination or the end of this lease agreement with the school board, which the latest one was for twenty-five years, and it ends on July thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. So, our, um, so the contract between the school board and the town on that parcel that now has all of these facilities on it expires at that time. So, in order to, um, in order to deal with just the tennis courts itself and all the strings attached to the tennis courts, we, um, tried to take an interim step with the, with the federal government, and we said, we want to stay all the way from this in-perpetuity part, as it relates to the, we want to wash ourselves, all of the in-perpetuity stuff. So, um, let's start with the tennis courts. Why don't you come down here and take a look at the tennis courts? And we'll, um, there's a, a specific thing that you have to do, you have to apply to the federal government to, to constitute those tennis courts as obsolete, meaning there, they could never be tennis courts again. And so, we did that in two thousand and sixteen. The federal government agreed that, yes, those are obsolete, and their answer was that you can remove those tennis courts at any time. But, um, even prior to the end of the agreement with the town, which is, again, is Ju- is July thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. So, we can remove them and bring them back down to what they call a passive recreational use, which could be just dirt. So, the, the, so the tennis courts can be addressed fairly quickly, and we can get into the details of that in just a minute and do a PowerPoint presentation, if you would like. So, so then, do you want to do the PowerPoint? Do you want a PowerPoint?
We can, for the people at home, it might be easier to follow along.
Sorry, rambling. So, Chris around, hey, Chris. Can you help? Oh, here it is. It's up there, so, it's up there. Chris, oh, never mind, okay. Okay, can we, can we make that, can we make that bigger?
Maybe.
Why don't you do it, Chris? We can't wait all night here.
I have empathy, believe me.
I ask people who know.
We've all had those AV moments in our meetings.
Look who we got, Chris.
Exactly.
She can continue.
If you want to continue just on your thoughts, and we'll just pop that up when it's ready.
Okay, um, it-
There we are.
Okay, all right, great.
How many people does it take to get it?
Next one, next one. Okay, so this gives, this gives a little, this gives a little bit better expla- uh, visual of what we're talking about, when we talk about the O'Gara Drive parcel. So, this is O'Gara Drive down here at the bottom, okay. So, um, the, so O'Gara Drive, um, this is the parcel outlined in yellow. You can see the tennis courts, which are the kind of the center point that I was just talking about, that, um, we got the grant for. It also includes some pretty, um, advanced lights at the time, they were very expensive lights at the time, which are now obsolete also, um, and, and difficult to remove. And then you have the ice skating rink, you have the skateboard park, and you have the basketball court. So, the grant included the tennis courts and the skating rink. The skateboard park came later, and the basketball court came later, or at some other time. So, um, as I was saying, the only real option that we have, um, and I apologize to the council members that I told that we really could move the skating rink and that kind of thing prior to the end of this grant. The answer is, when, when we went back and looked at the obsolescence grant, it didn't include the skating rink, or, um, so, the only thing that it allowed us to call obsolete and allowed us to bring back to its natural state was the tennis courts prior to the end of the lease that we have with the school board. So, um, we can take those tennis courts down, um, in a fairly quick manner, so that's not really too much of an issue. Where we run into a problem is when the, um, if we start doing anything besides the tennis courts before the end of that agreement occurs, then the whole thing comes back to life, the whole grant to perpetuity and the tennis courts, and everything comes back on the table again. So, the only way that we can, um, rid ourselves of that in-perpetuity clause for the whole thing is to allow the, um, to allow the lease agreement with the school to expire. But prior to that, we can do the tennis courts. Okay, so, the removal of the tennis courts, uh, we can have that done fairly quickly. The, uh, person that we, we have actually talked to a person about doing it, removing it, it cost about twenty thousand dollars. The council has already committed to doing that as, um, you know, as a, to the school board and said, you know, what, what you want, we will do. So, we can come up with the twenty thousand dollars to remove it. The reason why, well, Thanksgiving's only next week, so, um, but the reason why we've been waiting a little bit while is because the person that was the contractor was doing all that work on DW Highway.
The Culver.
It's a big Culver project over by, yeah, so, uh, they were kind of busy. So, um, so anyway, um, that, that is one of the things that we could do really quickly to get one of these things checked off the list.
Okay, can I just ask a clarifying question? I know that the lights have been used in the past to illuminate the, um, the ice rink a bit, and would the lights stay, or would you be taking the whole thing out and?
The lights have to go.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah. Okay.
Because it's part of the tennis courts.
Because it's part of the tennis. Now, um, we talked a little bit, um, with the town council about the idea of the ice skating rink and moving it to Watson Park, which we think is a lovely idea, a very charming idea. And, you know, just because it's kind of the center of town, and people are going by, and people are all ice skating, kind of a courier and Ives kind of thing. And, um, so we've talked about doing that. Now, um, what we have done, uh, maybe three or four years ago, is, um, we eliminated the ice skating rink that we had before that was a permanent structure, and we bought, we bought components that actually could be moved. So, it's, it wouldn't have to be destroyed and brought somewhere else, it actually was built to be moved. So, um, the decision about, um, about moving the skating rink makes me really nervous now that I've read this obsolescence letter that only talks about the skate park, skating par- uh, the-
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts, sorry. So, um, so, i- in my opinion, the safest way to, to do this would be to have the skating rink remain there, um, until the end of the, um, of, until two, the end of two thousand and, and June, July thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And, uh, and then move it then. To, and the idea would be to move it over to Watson Park. So, um, here is, you may not be interested in this, but you may, it's, it's just for your information only. The skating rink, we put in some ideas for options on where it might be located in Watson Park, because the council really has come to the conclusion that that's what they'd like to see. So, um, you know, these are three places that it could be, um, and it's really up to the council to, to make the decision on where that will be. And, um, it really relates to, um, there's, there aren't a lot of real options that are viable, because those green lines right there are floodplains. So, you know, the only real viable option would be three and-
We, we chose the one behind the park, right? I mean, behind the gazebo.
They never voted on one.
Oh, you didn't vote on one. So, I mean, that's, that's coming in the future. Anyway, there's pro- there's pros and cons to all the options, and that's what a lot of these slides say. So, um, that, you know, you can look through them if you want, but it's really a decision that the council would need to make as far as you, as far as, um, having it remaining there, and us as to moving it to Watson Park and where. We'd, we'd love your input if you, you have any interest, or any in- input from anyone in the public as to where that might happen. So, we're gonna skip through a lot of these skating rink things.
Those are the options that we had discussed.
Those three options, so this just shows some different kinds.
Is this PowerPoint on your website for the community at this point?
I believe it was going to be put there, it is.
Now, this is a really cool thing, that is, um, that was Matt's idea, right? Kyle's idea, that, um, under the, under the skating rink that can be removed, we would have a volleyball court.
Couple.
A couple of, two or three volleyball courts. So, in the summertime, so it could be used all year round. So, in the so- in the winter, it's skating, and in the summer, it's volleyball. So, um, I just think it's a, a really good, um, idea and a really good mix for that park. So, um, basketball court options, again, back to the whole discussion with the town council where we talked about, maybe we could move- where we talked about, maybe we could move those, we could eliminate, eliminate those basketball courts at the same time that we did the tennis courts. Now, with my new information, it's not really possible. Because they have not been declared obsolete. So, the basketball courts, there has been, it wouldn't be expensive to remove them, to remove the basketball courts. It could, the cost of removing the tennis courts and the basketball court together, I don't know what the, you know, breakdown is between them, is $20,000. So, it, it could very easily be, it could really easily be done, you know, in terms of cost-wise and, and timing-wise. The, the other thought was, and, and no one's responsible for this, but we believe that a full-size court is needed somewhere. Not so much the tennis courts, but the council felt strongly that a tennis, basketball court would be nice to be replaced, because it's used. And, and so, there has been some discussions for, from MYA who have talked about the idea of their funding. They're, they've setting, they've set aside money, and I should have asked Tom while he was here. Is he still here?
Let me move.
Approximately $10,000.
Oh, really? It's not what you told me. You said $45,000.
No, $45,000 is what it cost to build.
Oh, that's not what you told me. So, anyway. So, so anyway, there is, there is money available for, for, some money available for a tennis court, and there has been-
Basketball court.
Basketball.
Timmy's sports.
So, it is definitely past my bedtime. So, the idea about the tennis court, the basketball courts was actually to potentially locate them on the MYA property where their building is, in their parking lot. And according to Kyle, he has spoken to MYA about it, and they are okay with that.
That is correct.
Okay. So, so anyway, and I, I was just looking through the, through the CIP, the capital reserve funds, and there's actually $42,000 in there for playground equipment. So, that hasn't been necessarily set aside for anything specifically. So, so anyway, that would be the option for the, for the basketball courts. And if it is the desire of the school board, we know it's the desire of you, of us to remove the tennis courts. If this desire for the basketball courts to be removed by the school board, we can do that after July 30th, 2018. So, okay. So, now, there, now comes the big question about the skateboard park. The skateboard park, same thing, can't do anything until the end of the lease. And the question then becomes, is this a valuable thing to the community? Is this a valuable thing for the school? For students who might not be good at other things that may be good at this, at this sport? And the question then becomes, does that skateboard park get removed? And it would have to be demolished. So, you couldn't pick up those, those elements, if that's what it's called, and move them somewhere else. The whole thing would have to come down. We have to find a place for it, which we don't know of a place, and-
Officially, yeah.
We don't know of a place. And, and then it would cost approximately $150,000 to, yes, it would. So, so Kyle did out the numbers. So, so anyway, so, you know, building the, the skate, skate park and then all the elements would cost about $150,000, which would have to be a warrant article. So, that's where the, the question mark is. You know, I guess the, the school board can discuss what they would like us to do, or you can bring it back to your own meeting, because I, you know, none of this information was probably made available to you. But, the tennis courts, you can give me an answer whenever you want, want to give me the answer on that, and we can get it done after Thanksgiving. The basketball courts and the skating rink, hope you understand that there's nothing that we can do about that. And the, and the skate park is another question. And I don't know what the answer is to that.
Okay. So, I'm seeing, I have Michael, Finley, I see Bill, I see Cindy. So, we'll start with Michael, Finley, Bill, Cindy.
Sounds like a rock band. Better than a country.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. So, just for clarification, if you do the basketball court and the tennis court separate, obviously it would cost more than if you did them all at once, is that?
Not necessarily. This is a, a person that, not a lot more.
Potentially more, though.
Not, not a lot more. This, this person is somebody that does things for the town and is very involved in, you know, doing above and beyond the cost. So, I'm sure he would do the same thing, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's $18,000, $17,000 for this and $3,000 for that. But I'm sure it wouldn't be any too much.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. So, I guess due to the lease coming up, that gives you the authority to take certain items down at the end of the lease. At the end of the lease. However, it sounds like, depending on the school board's desire, you're going to possibly need to acquire extension in order to take, well, we don't want to assume the actual facilities and have it under the town purview.
I think, because I'm, I'm going to put it right on the table, actually. I, it's, it's one of those things, it can come down at the end of the lease. We can tear everything right out of there at that point. I think what I'm, what I would like to ask is that the school board contemplate letting that stay there until the properties needed for the SAU sped office or whatever might happen there. That, that's what I'm looking for, so.
So, I was kind of going down that road, thank you for kind of bringing it up. So, my question would be, is if, if we were to, if the school board were to allow it to stay longer, does that have any effect on the actual issues that you have currently?
We couldn't sign another lease, so the end of, am I answering the question that you asked?
I guess that's our question, because I'm, I'm figuring-
We, we, if we signed another lease, then we start getting back into the imperperity. If we want to get rid of the federal government entirely out of our hair, at least as far as that property is concerned, we need to let the lease expire.
And not establish a new one.
And not establish a new one.
So, you'd be asking the school district to take over recreational facilities for the town?
No, we would not. What I'm saying, all I'm saying is-
If, if we extended the, leaving the property there, right?
You own the property, so there are, so the, I know it's confusing, but, so, the basketball courts, we could take down. We don't have any issues with that. The MYA may contribute toward, and they have a place to put basketball courts, so that could easily be replaced. The tennis courts, we're willing to take them down right now, because we've got that obsolete, obsolescence thing. The ice skating rink, anytime after the end of the lease, we can move that. So, you don't, you've lost, you've lost the basketball courts, you've lost the skating rink, and you've lost the tennis courts. There only remains one thing left, and that's the skate park. And that's the question, is what is the desire of both boards to do as far as the skate park is concerned? With the kind of understanding that at a hundred, cost of $150,000, people might not vote to replace that and buy land to put it on.
Okay. But I think the clarification needs to be, hopefully I'm addressing your question as well. After the lease has expired, if the park were, the skating rink park would be there, can the town council sign another lease for that skate park in terms of liability and stuff? Is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out if we can figure out a way to-
Are we allowed to do that?
Extend it like Finley's saying, without keeping you in the issue.
But what we would really call it would mostly be like something like a management agreement.
Okay, so.
So, we would take liability, we would maintain it, we would, you know, do all those kinds of things.
Yes, that's exactly, thank you for clarifying.
And I just wanted to clarify one thing that you said earlier, so, because things go too viral too fast, and it's so detrimental to our work. We have not, as a board, voted to use that property for an SAU sped office. No, it was just, that was, that was what the, if we needed it for that, I need to be clear, the board has never taken the position that that is what we're going to do. I've seen social media tout that we're going to put a $10 million Crystal Palace on that site, and that's not the case. So-
No, it's platinum.
Oh, is it platinum? Okay, I'm sorry. So, on that note, I just, you know, misinformation perpetuates unnecessary angst and distress. And I can't say strongly enough that until you see it on the ballot, it doesn't exist. It's suburban legend, because we are not a city. So, on that note, I just want to make that very clear. So, you know, right now, we're looking at it as, what's the best way of going for it? Because it's district property, and what's the best thing for the district for that property? And that's what that letter was, was there to address, that we sent to you a few months ago. So, I just, I want to thank you for the indulgence on that. And I know that I have a list of people as well, so. I just, Mike, sorry about that.
Yeah, I just want to finish by making it-
I took Mike's mic.
So, I just want to go on record that I personally would actually be in favor of actually extending the use based off of if the town could assume management stuff until if, if the school board were to decide to use that property for something else, for a period of like another year or something like that with limitations, to kind of help with the process overall, to either find a better solution or see if there's other options there. So, that's all I want to put out there.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Are you referring to the skate park only?
I'd be open to discussion overall, but I think that the, I personally would like to see both the basketball court and the tennis court taken down, because it's an eyesore, and the basketball court is actually, I feel, not actually fully used because of the situation within it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I'm going to go with the roll call on this one. So, in order, we have Finley, Bill Boyd, Cindy Gualy, me, Tom Koenig, and then Andy Schneider. So. Okay?
What is the actual question? I mean-
Oh, no, that's just the order of who's going first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about-
Sorry. So, so, Finley, Bill, Cindy, Tom, and then Andy. Sorry about that, guys, long night. So, it's yours.
I actually already stole my time from Mike, so I'm all set now.
Okay, done. Bill?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to echo Board Member Thompson, I appreciate you going out publicly and supporting the skateboard park. And I was going to ask that the school board members consider two things, that when the lease ends on July 30th, 2018, to at least continue some type of a temporary agreement so that the kids could use it through the summer to the Veterans Day, but also to consider a short-term agreement with the town while we explore options as to where we can find a more permanent solution, if there is a permanent solution, for the skateboard park. Because I really truly believe that the kids in this community do use it. I see them before school and after school, and during the summer months using the skateboard park. So, I would hope that the school board would continue to want to keep that facility intact at its current location. And I would urge you to act favorably upon that request. Thank you.
Cindy, you're up.
A couple of my questions have already been answered. First of all, and then Shannon, I'd like to thank you for that clarification regarding that O'Gara Drive property as it relates to social media and some fake news that's been out there. But similarly, I would say regarding that same property, the clarification that I would have is that the school board has never said, "You can't be here." The town has not been kicked off of that piece of property. So, you, as you very, in a very detailed manner, explained some of the history regarding that property. What I would say is, I think when you look at the question that you're talking about, I think where I see it is, the town would need to come back to the school board with a consensus and ask us a very detailed question that we could vote on. So, for example, if the town wants to leave the skate park there as part of it, then that should be a, a question directly to us for which we could vote on. So, and then with that would come, I think, what kind of an agreement would be in place to support that? What kind of requirements would be necessary to support that? And so on and so forth. So, that's just the way that I see it. I mean, when I look at the question, it, it really becomes, what is the town asking for us? You've come to us not wanting to renew that lease. You've asked how we've wanted the land returned. I think that, I think that we would be open to any of the, the questions that you would have of us. This is my feeling, but that's the way I see it anyways.
Tom?
Thanks. I just want to clarify, or make sure that we all understand, that the discussion about the ending of the lease is very critical. We would not in any way, shape, or form be interested in extending anything that had to do with that lease. That lease is dying, it's going to die and be dead. The town cannot make any kind of a commitment now for what might happen afterwards, because that might be construed as an extension of that effort. We could potentially hypothetically enter an agreement after that lease is done to do something in that area. But there's no way it can be considered an extension, because if we do, the entire parcel becomes an imperperity, whatever that word is that, that Eileen has fun working with. Forever, for all four of those pieces. And we'd have to build and replace or whatever, forever. And so, that lease must die, and must die a very painful death. And nobody can consider it an extension or retake or a move on or anything. It's a brand-new deal the town potentially could get into after the end of this lease. But it's a brand-new deal.
Of course. Yes, I think from what Tom was saying. I think that the, the question of the, the skating rink, we've already gotten the answer from the school board relative to the tennis courts. And to ask the question of the school board, would you allow the skating rink to remain until the end of the lease, is a question we could ask you without getting into that. And would you like us to remove the basketball court is a question that we could ask prior to the lease. We couldn't move them before then, but we could ask that before there. The skate park and any extension of, 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 the, the appearance of an extension of a relationship between us can't happen until the lease actually expires the day after we can talk about the skate park. Okay, fair enough.
Oh, you're like, sorry.
It's clarification for everyone.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
So, you said, Tom? You also said? Okay, so now we're over to Andy.
Okay. So, let's, I want to round the picture out a little bit. So, it's- So it's -- everybody's been pretty accurate. Once the lease is done, it's the next summer, then the town's obligation to upkeep it based on all the strings that were attached disappears. We've given you the okay to go and get rid of the tennis courts now, because they're done. The skating rink needs to stay this year, I think we get that. Basketball court needs to stay till the end, then we can remove that. Skate park is a big issue. It's been the big issue, the hot button on social media about mean school board making the skate park have to disappear to put this big SAU sped building right there. I do want to bring forward that if somebody was paying attention several years ago, there were concerns the school board had about the skate park when the town council decided to no longer fund the attendant that was at the skate park, and also not put up monitoring cameras there. Now, I want to be aware that the skate park is on school-owned property. It also falls within the drug-free zone per state RSAs that requires that it be a monitored environment where there's no drugs all the time, you know, not just during school hours, but all the time as well. So for me, as a school board member, I have no problem with talking to the town to extend or leave the skate park there, because we don't have an immediate use. But I will be really concerned about how it gets monitored and up-kept and everything else during that extension, because for me, as one board member, that's what concerns me. It's not the skate park, it's the monitoring, it's the ongoing ability to make sure that it's a safe place for all the kids to go, so that they're -- if you talk to people that go there with their kids today, there are observed situations that I haven't done, but I have heard others talk about. So that would need to be addressed, in my mind, as part of any extension, of which I'm certainly open to talk about, so.
Can I -- the only thing I want to tell you is, this is all going to be in minutes, so if we start talking about the skate park and what would be management agreements in this meeting...
Misinterpretation.
You've got to be careful. So if we could just talk about the three, I appreciate your input about the skate park and it's -- and that decision will be made, and all those things will be considered once the lease expires.
August 1st, 2018.
Have you just booked our next joint meeting?
I completely understand the focus of this discussion, but I want to plant the seed as to -- because we've talked as a school board, individual members have chimed in about the ability to look at -- to be open to talk about extensions, you know, or a new agreement after this one's done with. But I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that there's a full picture that we, as a board, need to worry about, so that's all.
But I just, this in perpetuity thing, if we do something wrong, even minutes of a meeting, is going to bind the town forever to replace these items. So all I'm just saying is, you've got to be careful with saying extending agreements or that kind of thing. If it's -- and I'm not trying to -- I'm not trying to split hairs, I'm just saying that this is -- we're entering into some dangerous ground that could affect the town forever. So I appreciate your feedback.
What you're saying is, end of discussion.
Yes. On that.
Okay.
Not to belabor this at all. I'm...
Okay, I'll win my turn, absolutely.
So, Bill?
Very quickly, to Board Member Snyder, considering I'm the one that moved to make that funding cut for the attendant, I also advocated to putting cameras at that particular location, because of its proximity to the police station, the ability for the police to be able to respond there should an incident be there. So I agree with your concern, and it was something I would advocate for after July 30th, 2018.
So it's a good thing we're not talking about it.
Yeah, but we're not talking about it.
Okay. So, Finley?
Sorry for almost jumping in appropriately. I just, skateboard parks in general, I've heard those comments before, but everybody has a cell phone today, right down to five-year-olds at times. And I'd be -- it'd be so easy to catch anything going on. So if somebody saw something like that, they'd be on the phone to the PD, which is 50 yards away, and it would be like shooting fish in a barrel, for crying out loud. So I don't know that it's a monster problem when there's a lot of people there. I'm not going to say it doesn't happen, because parks in general, playgrounds, school properties, it all can go on. So it's -- I just don't -- I don't want skaters to get a bad rap, because I don't, you know, those things are easily reported out and can be captured.
So, I have actual questions about the part that I'm allowed to talk about, if you don't mind. So I know that you talked about the ice rink, and after July 30th, we really have a better idea and a better place. And by the way, it sounds really exciting with the volleyball, so I wish you all the luck and success with that. So the parcel that -- part of the thing that shall not be named, we'll just move on from that. But the basketball court, I know that you talked about. Now, things can happen concurrently, just because can you concurrently build a basketball court before July 30th at NYA property for that purpose, or does it have to wait till August 1st, too?
I would say, I would rather not do anything of that sort.
Okay.
You know, and have it be...
Because it wouldn't be new property at that point?
Well, what it is, is it -- I'm not sure that the federal government really cares, but if they did care, and they came here, and they said, "Oh, you're building a new baseball -- basketball court, and you're tearing this other one down, now you've got something else going on." And we don't have a formal agreement, certainly, about funding or location with NYA, so I don't think we're at a point where we could talk about that without having another meeting with them.
Okay, well, I will draw my question to August 1st, if that's fine with you.
2018.
2018. There you go. And the August 1st, because they're all clean then.
I think the other dynamic for the basketball court in NYA is the replacement of the bridge going over the brook right there, as well as the traffic configuration for the intersection, because it's talk -- Kyle Fox talks to us about, from the DPW, about they may end up changing or making an exit there, entrance exit, to make it more of a T-intersection with Y Road. So there's a lot of dynamics, and that's kind of another reason why it's being held off a little bit, too.
Fair enough. So I will draw my question to August 1st, and we'll have more to talk about then. So are there any other questions or comments on this agenda? Michael?
I just want to make a comment in regards to the skate park itself. I think that it just should be said that, as you can hear from everybody here, it is in the intention for the community to continue to have a skate park in some form. That is what I think is the intention for the community. I want to just make that clear, so that people understand that we're not looking to just take the skate park away and not move forward with something else. So just to reiterate the issues of social media and going off the rails, so just please understand that that is the intention, I think, of -- I can't speak for everybody, but I speak for myself and the communications I have. So, thank you.
Eileen?
So just to kind of tie a bow around the tennis courts, do we have your permission?
That was my other question. Sorry. I covered it up. So the question I have is, for the removal of the tennis courts, how will it impact school operations? Because obviously, if you're going to bring it in while students and buses and kids parked weird ways, because they just got their driver's licenses on that section of the road, because we know them. And mine might be one of them, I'm not going to lie to you, sometime, probably in the next month. But on that note, so when are you looking to do this? Would this -- would school be in session?
We don't have a specific time. We're willing to work with you, so I would have Kyle and Matt sit down and talk to Marge and, you know, and whoever else she felt was appropriate about what a time would be, and then find out from Kyle how long it would take.
Okay. I think that's fair. As long as, you know, I think we've always had that concern with students in place. Cindy?
I mean, it makes me wonder if there's really no hurry or urgency. You know, maybe it does make sense to do it after school is closed.
Yes, yes and no. The state came, talked to Matt, I think it was maybe last summer, and said, "You know how we made that tennis court obsolete? Why is it still there?" So, again, it's not like they come here every six months, and this is on the top of their list or anything. But I just want to make sure that you understand the -- all the little doodads that are going on about it. So as far as I'm concerned, if you say that you'd rather wait till summer, I don't think we're going to get busted for that.
We'll put all the snow in it for this winter. It was piled right in the -- right over the fence or something.
Yes. We can allow snow shooing, so we'll have...
The only thing that we were pushing is it is an eyesore. And we wanted to be able to clean it up in terms of safety, too.
It's been ugly for seven, eight, nine years now, so, you know. Ugly for a few more months is not going to break us.
So the answer is yes, from you, to tear it down?
I think, yeah, that was always, honestly...
Right, I just want to ask it again.
Honestly, the way it works is, be collaborative with us, and be collaborative with our administration. We sent you a letter basically with our expectations, no later than. Obviously, you've come back to us with some concerns on that, and we acknowledge them, knowing what the consequences are. But the tennis courts are obsolete, and I think that's been an agreed-upon fact for a while. So if the district feels that's going to impact operations, we would ask you to hold off. If the district feels they want to get rid of the ugly, we support it. So, and I think that's been a standing with our letter. Michael?
Sorry. I just want to make one more statement in regards to the skate park. I would like to, and I -- Matt, you can help me with the name of the individuals that actually donated the equipment for the skate park.
The Flora's.
Laflora. I just...
The Flora's.
Flair.
Flara.
Flair. Okay. I just want to thank that family, and also state that the intention is to continue to honor what they are looking for from the community and what they've given to the community. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
I'm sorry for saying Flara wrong. So on that note, we will have -- we're really planning for another joint meeting, aren't we? First topic already scheduled. Hopefully, it'll be a shorter one. So in the interest of time, and with the lack of the moderator, I would like to entertain that we table agenda item number five. Still moved.
Well, may I?
Of course, absolutely.
I think it can literally be done in five minutes, if it's okay.
Sure.
And I can do probably most of it.
If you could do it...
And as my town council will admit to, I'm pretty fast.
Yep, we'll welcome it, if that's okay.
Okay. We have had the moderator, Lynn Christensen, give a report to the town council. As it relates to, our question was how the new procedure by using the schools during the election went. As far as we were told, everything went very smoothly, traffic patterns. As a result, we found out we need new voting booths, which we have approved in our budget, but that there were no problems that occurred as a result. As a town councilor, I would like to hear from the school, since you are the sites at which the voting occurred. Were there any issues that we need to address? I think that's the bottom line.
Marge?
I would say there were no issues, because there was a lot of pre-planning. And so, again, partnership is terribly important, and there was a wonderful partnership between the town, ala Lynn Christensen, came before. We walked it with all the staff, so we knew exactly how to do business. And then it comes down to refinement, so I would say it's working.
Thank you. And I think, you know, this April will be the town, which we will use the schools, obviously the presidential. The schools are closed anyway, so that was less of an issue. But this past elections were the true test, and we thought it was successful, and I'm hearing from your side it was as well, understanding that that communication and the police department was imperative in that planning, as well as the town and the schools. So it was effective, and it was success. Is that correct? But we will continue with that communication in future endeavors.
Excellent.
Great. See, I thought it was five minutes.
There you go. You did in three. So we're on to item number eight, which is the approval of the last two sets of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the December 10th, 2015 minutes?
Still moved.
Still moved by Bill Boyd, seconded by Cindy Gualyumi. Are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstain?
Abstain.
We have two. We have Mike Thompson, and we have Peter Albert, because just thinking about joining at the time. Excellent. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the June 14th, 2016 minutes.
Still moved.
Moved by Bill Boyd. Do I have a second? Seconded by Andy Schneider, who might get a word in tonight, who knows, right? Are there any edits?
You think it's easy.
There you go. Are there any edits to the June 14th, 2016 minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstain? I'm looking right at you, Peter Albert, one. And two, I'm sorry, three. So Peter Albert, Tom Kinnick, and Finley Rothaus. So the motion passes. And I will open again up to item number nine, which is public comments. Are there any people who'd like to speak to tonight's agenda items? You have to come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cory LaBelle, 26, Beavelyne, Merrimack. So I have an issue with the thing that was passed, I guess, yesterday through the school board about parents or drivers of the school bus not being able to bring their older children on the school bus. We were just told this this morning by our boss, that you guys passed a whatever, that we can't bring our kids on the bus. We were told to come here and talk to you guys.
I will have to defer the board, you'll see on public record, we have not had those as an agenda item, so I will defer to Matt Chevanel.
Point of clarification. We had an issue with a middle school child riding an upper elementary school bus that was quite concerning to us. So we do not allow that. We will continue to honor the longstanding practice of bus drivers who want to have their own children with them on the bus, who are of lower grade levels.
So if we have older children, we're not allowed to bring them with our normal routes?
If you are their parent, you could do that.
Right, but if we have a middle schooler, we can't have them ride with our upper elementary or elementary route, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so do you guys, are you guys aware that there is a four-bus-driver shortage currently? We have four routes that are unattended. You have four drivers currently on medical leave, and one on government leave. And you have nine drivers that this affects who are now looking for new jobs.
This is something we'll take up with Greg Stinson, the regional vice president, tomorrow morning, and he will get back to you.
Okay, and this is actually what we consider personnel, so normally, you would not engage. So with that, you just kind of threw us that we had a vote that we didn't know about. So on that note, we would like you to work with our district personnel offline, and we can see we can resolve the questions that you have.
Who is that?
You'll work with, we'll have Matt Chevanel be the lead for our administration. He works with our transportation coordinator and the bus company.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that note, is there any other public comment to come before the joint board? Seeing, okay, thanks. Seeing none, we'll take a motion...
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Bill Boyd, very boisterously. Do I have a second? Seconded by Peter Albert. All those in favor signify by saying aye. United, thank you, and good night.